Is excused from the meeting. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since we only have thirty agenda items this evening, we figured that maybe we'll just push all the presentation of awards to the end.[35.15][35.15](Laughter). Just kidding. All right, rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and other rules that we adopt during the annual organizational meeting. I want to take this time just to announce that I am calling a special meeting on April 3rd at six o'clock. It will be right before we start our budget meeting for the conversion of a ban note that we have. This is a process, legal process, that we have to officially go through, so that will be posted, but it is a special meeting, so I just wanted to announce that. Item four, adoption of Ellsworth City Council minutes to thirteen twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting.
Move to adopt. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city managers' report. Manager Moser.
Good evening. Thank you. I have a couple of announcements to make. First off, I just want to let the public know that starting on April 3rd, the City Hall Church Street parking lot will be closed to all vehicles except, with the exception of handicap plates or placards. The closure will be approximately two weeks in length, and the reason is because we will have a very large lift here in the parking lot while work is being done on the cupola. So, we apologize for the inconvenience, and we'll get it, that parking lot, open just as quickly as we can. Also, just want to run down through the budget workshops for the public to take note on, and these will be posted. The budget workshops this year will also be broadcast, so you'll be able to watch those on Facebook and YouTube. So, the first one is starting this Thursday, three twenty-three, and the budgets that will be covered at that meeting are the administration budgets, which are the departments that are located here in City Hall. On three twenty-seven, the public safety budgets will be gone over, and that's police, fire, EMS, and dispatch. On three thirty, public works, which consists of the highway department, water, wastewater, the watershed, solid waste, and the harbor, will all be taken up. On four-three, the library and the recreation committees' recommendations will be heard. Other outside entities such as the historical preservation, WIC, Friends in Action, just to name a few, will also be present that night for their requests. On four-six, we will hear the Capitol, Capitol's accounts for all of the city, Capitol, and then on the tenth or the thirteenth, depending on how this conversation goes later in the meeting about your next meeting, will be the Ellsworth school departments. In addition, on three twenty-nine, we're having a special workshop to discuss joint Capitol needs for the city as well as the school department, and that will be right here in the council chambers at six o'clock on the twenty-ninth. And finally, I just also wanted to announce that the water department will be flushing hydrants starting April tenth until approximately April twenty-first. It's a semi-annual event which takes place every spring and fall. The flushing is done to clean the lines and help prevent possible future problems. Users will experience dirty or yellow water, low water flow or pressure. This is only temporary and should subside soon after the flushing is complete. If you have any questions, please contact the water department at six six seven eight six three two. That is all I have for this evening.
The special workshop on the twenty-ninth, will that one be broadcast too, or no?
That will not be broadcast, no.
And so that's at six or at five?
Did I misspeak?
You said six, but the email said five.
Then it's five. I apologize. I was on a roll with a six o'clock. That's all I have. Other questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any councils have any reports from committees? Counselor Hanson.
I have a report from communications committee. We met on February twenty-second and discussed a number of options for how to communicate better with citizens about upcoming meetings and also important decisions that are being made, and ways to involve city councilors, city staff, and also community partners in that, using the city website, social media, newspaper, things like that. We had a lot of good ideas that we passed around. We are also aware that the city manager is hiring an administrative assistant, and that person, part of their job is going to be to be a communications officer, so we have a list of ideas that we think will be helpful, and our plan is to meet after that person gets hired, and then, at least for the time being, to meet quarterly to keep working on communication stuff.
Ms. Chairman, the rec committee met last week and previously, before the budget meeting. There was some talk of needing eventually somebody as a staffer in the city should be helpful for managing some of the rec plans. This is recurring theme of that committee. Budget meetings are coming up. We talked about an ice fest for next winter time, holiday season, talk as well of changing ordinance from going from nine to seven members to more easily make a quorum to get more business done. Wanted to reiterate that November twenty-fifth will be the tree lighting and small business weekend. December second will be the holiday parade with the snow day, the following day on the third. We wanted to thank Woodlong for hosting ice skating, but next year we plan to have the rink back at Nolton Park. The historic preservation commission wanted to thank the council for reallocating funds for the Karma Survey, which will begin as soon as a surveyor is identified. These will be about forty properties on Main Street and parts of High Street. These may be some residences and some businesses. Residents will be notified that their home will be surveyed. There will also be a public hearing in the next few months as soon as we identify when the surveyor is coming on to answer any questions that the public may have about this. And we'll hear in a second about a request to add a, an appointee to that commission as well. The comp plan steering committee is underway as well, and will soon break out into subcommittees. We're looking for as much public input as possible. It's a very exciting time. Public will be able to be on all kinds of different committees and wide-ranging appointments, depending on expertise and interest in things like public works, walkability, water, and other resources. So, please pay attention. We'd love to have as much public input as possible when that comes up. Questions?
Anyone else? Do you want to make that?
Yes, I would like to move to appoint Carla Haskell as a volunteer consultant to the historic preservation commission.
You have a motion?
Move to appoint Carla Haskell as a volunteer consultant to the historical preservation commission.
A second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Unanimous. All right. Item seven, citizens' comments. So, I just want to take a time to make sure I clarify this process. Couple people raised this as a question. Citizens' comments is a time where you have three minutes. You can speak on any issue you'd like to bring it to the attention of the city and of the council. There are agenda items. You can use that time to speak about an agenda item and use that time there for that purpose, or you can wait and speak about agenda items as they come up. So, you can use the three minutes to talk about anything. If you want to wait for the agenda to come on, you can speak to every agenda item that you wish. We open that up for discussion and feedback during agenda items. Some boards and commissions only have one place on the agenda for public comment, and that's when you would comment on everything. The city council here has an opportunity, we give the opportunity for comment, on each agenda item. So, this portion allows you to speak on anything you want. If you don't want to wait for thirty agenda items and you want to speak on an issue, you can use your time to speak now on that issue. If you do that, you will be allowed to speak again on that agenda. So, I hope that that's clear. I'll remind everybody that you have that opportunity to speak on agenda items as well. So, with that said, if anybody would like to use this time to speak on an issue, they can just go to the mic, state your name, and you have three minutes.
I'm John Lunnahan, one fifty-seven Shore Road here in Ellsworth. I want to speak about just a general topic. First, I want to read a quote from Calvin Coolidge. "A government which lays taxes on the people not required by urgent public necessity and sound public policy is not a protector of liberty, but an instrument of tyranny. It condemns the citizens to servitude." And I want to speak just for a second. I know we've got a big agenda tonight. I want to just hit it very generally. I believe we're spending way too much money in our city of Ellsworth. When I look through the agenda items today, it seems like every other item is spend, 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 purchase, purchase, purchase. I believe our spending is our ending, and as the Calvin Coolidge quote said, if we don't get a handle on our spending, I think we're on borderline headed towards another depression. I think you just saw the sixteenth largest bank in the United States fail, other ones are failing, and I think our economy is in very fragile shape. And I think at all levels of government, the spending needs to be reined in and controlled, so I encourage our council here to be proactive and look at the future, look at the history, see what happened back years ago, and we're heading in the similar direction. So, I encourage our council to be very, very careful and frugal with the spending. Look for necessity items, not what we want, but what we need. Not our greed, but our needs. Thank you very much.
Anyone in the front row? All right. With that, presentation of awards. First presentation is for Lisa Sekulich, our public works director.
The city of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of service in recognition of your five years of service as the public works director for the city of Ellsworth. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. I can't believe it's been five years. (Laughter).
Right. And now we have some special awards that we want to present on behalf of the whole council, and certainly if any members of the council want to say anything, please speak up. This is, all of these awards that I'm about to announce are for our youth who have accomplished a lot, made the community very proud. You had a lot of people watching, very impressive. So, with that said, I will call up first the Ellsworth High School girls varsity basketball.
Josh has been on for the whole time. The city of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of achievement to the Ellsworth High School girls varsity basketball. In recognition of your dedication and teamwork to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, you showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the main class B basketball first place gold ball trophy. Congratulations on all of your hard work, and I believe this is the first girls' gold ball.
(Cheers).
(Cheers).
We're not done.
(Laughter).
So, now I'd like to call up the EHS Eagles cheerleading. Oh, yeah, of course.
Sorry.
Don't apologize for speaking.
I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School, and I'm a member of the girls varsity basketball team. I just wanted to thank the community for all the support throughout the season. We wouldn't be here without your support throughout our amazing year. This community is the heart and soul of our team, and I just wanted to say thank you for supporting us during our journey of bringing home the gold ball. I am forever thankful for the love and support everyone has provided. Thank you.
(Applause).
All right. Now, I'd like to call up the EHS Eagles cheerleading.
(Applause). The city of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of achievement to the Ellsworth High School Eagles cheerleading in recognition of your dedication and teamwork to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. You showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the state class B championship title. Congratulations on all of your hard work.
(Applause).
Hey Dale, that was an awesome first time.
That was the first time for the cheerleading, too? Wow. Next year will be your second.
Now, I'd like to call up Ella of Montgomery. She's not here. Okay, well, let me read this. "In recognition of your dedication to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, you showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the two-hundred-yard medley relay. Congratulations on all your hard work." Ellie Anderson. "In recognition of your dedication to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, you showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the two-hundred-yard medley relay. Congratulations on all of your hard work." (Applause). "In recognition of your dedication to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, you showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the two-hundred-yard medley relay. Congratulations on all of your hard work." (Applause). And Kiara Springer. They're all still swimming in the pool. In recognition of your dedication to EHS Athletics for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, you showed great sportsmanship and commitment through the year and won the state championship diving competition and the two-hundred-yard medley relay. Congratulations on all your hard work." (Applause).
So, just in closing, those are great accomplishments. Years, all of you have been competing for years, and to be able to have that kind of success is a reflection on that hard work that you've done, so it's really impressive. But I think also probably more impressive is who you are as young people, being leaders in your sports, but also leaders in the community at your school, so thank you very much.
(Applause). And with that, you don't have to stay for the other three days. Run, run. Unless you're a political science major, then have a seat.
Good work out there. Congratulations.
Good night.
Ah, you're going to take them all back. What about the gold ball?
Who's taking the ball?
Thank you.
(Laughter).
See you then.
Start a council pickup league or something.
I know. All right.
That was awesome.
All right, unfinished business. Item nine, discussion update on Maine Organics after the ninety-day period for Josh Wellman to make changes in coordination with the Department of Environmental Protection on the bird problem and odor control in accordance with chapter fifty-six of the Unified Development Ordinance.
I'm Lori Roberts, a code enforcement officer, and we had met with the DEP in regards to the odor and birds, and they had come up with a plan for Josh. It had gone really well from January twenty-fifth, I hadn't had any complaints, until March eighth, so we had done really well.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I, then I went to March sixteenth and March seventeenth. So, there was some complaints after that, but it had gone a long span, which it hadn't been that in a very long time, without complaints. So, can you talk about your changes?
Sure. Josh Wellman, Maine Organics. So, we had some issues with odor and whatnot, and the DEP came in, and we had odor problems with birds as well. The DEP came in, worked with us, and now we're doing everything the DEP wants us to do. We put netting up in front of the bunkers, and that took care of the birds, and the birds, for whatever reason, it just really freaked them out, and they just took off, and they haven't been back since, which is great. The odor, we changed our mix, working with the specialist Mark King of the DEP. We're using not only the Jackson Lab shavings, but we're also using wood chips to add just regular wood chips, like an avarice would bring into us and dump off. So, we're mixing that in with the mix as well, and it gives it a better smell, and then also it adds porosity into the pile, lots of air in there, so. We've made some changes. Just lately, I think those complaints that we got, I have, every complaint that comes in, I have to respond to it and send a form back to the complain, complainer, and tell them, you know, what we've done. We have to basically figure out where the odor's coming from and then reply back to them, this is what's going on. And when they did send in the complaint, it was because we had a load of seafood waste come in, and we were mixing. So, at that time, I mean, a load of seafood waste comes in, you're going to have some odor, but it's not an odor that goes on forever. It's just an odor that's going to last for the period of time that we're mixing. It could be two hours, it could be four hours. And then, once we're done mixing, it's covered, and then there's no more odor. So, if it's an ongoing odor, yes, I understand there's something, there's something wrong, but if a load of waste comes in and we're mixing it, and the wind's blowing towards the neighbors, probably going to get a little bit odor. There's just nothing we can do about it, but we're doing everything the DEP wants us to do right now, and that happens to what we're doing, and so, we're all, everything's been good.
And in your packets were a copy of the, from the DEP, Mr., I always pronounce his last name incorrectly, Sam Morsky. He had submitted in the packets about what they're doing and how they're going to become better at what they're doing from the stuff that Mark had given him, the ideas, and then they also sent us a copy, which is also in your packet, of the notice of violation that they gave them from the odors from before.
So, just, just to be clear in terms of the process, because this has come up as questions.
Yep.
The reason the DEP is involved is that they have jurisdiction over this, this particular issue, is that?
They license them.
So, that's, and that's why in terms of the ordinance that we have is actually, deals with the planning board ordinance, it's not an ordinance of jurisdiction over odor?
Well, the attorney submitted an email to me on how we could fine them if the council chose to do that, and it was also in your packet. Yep. So, that was, you know, as part of the packet, just to give you an idea. The city basically would need to file an enforcement action to fine them and have the court impose a fine, and upon conviction, a violator would be fined a hundred dollars per day, per proven violation and the, and the city's attorney's fees. Alternately, the city could negotiate an administrative consent agreement with the alleged violator, which essentially is a contract that would seek to have the alleged violator agree to pay a lower fine than would be imposed by a court for one or more alleged violations in return for refraining to sue them.
So, each violation requires?
Every day is a new.
You have to go to the court each time for each violation and prove that?
Yes. Each day is a new violation. Yeah.
Thank you. I just think it's important for the whole community to understand.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry.
No, that's. Other questions? Counselor Hell.
I just, I have a comment that I would just like to bring to the city's attention. Just because there's not complaints doesn't mean it doesn't smell. I drive by there twice a day, and the property owners there are suffering, and they're all tired of complaining and filling out logs with nothing being done. This has been going on a long, long time, and I'd just like to point that out, that just because there's not a complaint doesn't mean that there's not an odor. And it's a very frustrating thing for the property owners in that area. It's very frustrating, and I, I drive by twice a day. I do think there's been some improvement, but I think there's a lot of work left to be done. To say there's no smell would not be fair. I think probably your employees and you get sense, get desensitized to that because you smell it every day, and the neighbors, they get tired of it quick, as you can see.
So, you feel as though there's improvement, and there's room for more improvement, but right now there is improvement over what it was a few months ago.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, Theodore Williams, Williams irrigation, he would contact me often when it was, you know, there was an odor, and he hasn't contacted me for a long time. It was, it's usually the Williams, Wallace. And E.L. Shea was complaining about the birds, which I understand, and there's been no complaints. The only one I've gotten is the three that Lori just talked about from Mr. Wallace. And he's kind of in the direction that the wind goes most of the time. It's a southeast direction.
So, like, what's the plan going forward? DEP's working with you?
Yes.
Constantly?
Yeah, they're, they're doing site visits, probably twice a month, and I'm contacting, you know, we're in contact all the time. And my son Connor now is there full-time. He's a manager there, so that's really helped. He's really brought things around, having another employee there, so it's been good.
Is there anybody here that wanted to speak on this?
So, as far as the birds, I know that there had been, you were looking at those, are they bird spikes that go on the, you know, so keep the?
At one point, we were, yes, yeah.
Okay, is that not?
I don't think they're, I don't even think they're needed now. The birds are completely gone.
But you're open to if it does become an issue?
Yes, I spoke to Williams about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about it. Him and I told him to get me a quote on it, and we would look at it.
Okay.
He put these nets up over the bunkers.
Yeah, I think that's in our packet.
Oh, okay, you saw that.
That, that really?
It was amazing.
Yeah, it was.
They can't get in there and eat, so they don't come there anymore.
Right, it just freaked them out.
Yeah.
Mr. Wellman, you were required as well to put some of your compost into those bunkers with the bird netting instead of out in the middle of the?
Yeah, we use the bunkers for composting. We mix- Yeah, we use the bunkers for composting, we mix it, and then it goes into the bunkers, and it sits there. We cut, we blend it, and then it goes into the bunkers, and it sits for like seven days, and it helps take the odor out, and this was a recommendation that the DEP made, and then we take it out. So, the birds, from time to time, would get into those bunkers. So what we do is we put the netting up, and it took care of them, yeah, basically.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 10, Council Order Number 032301, reservation of the City of Ellsworth's right to harvest all lives. 11, Council Order Number 032302, request of the city manager to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June 13th, 2023, for the purpose of validating the school budget. And item 12, Council Order Number 032303, request of the tax collector to release properties redeemed during the 30-day redemption period ending March 9th, 2023, through quick claim deeds. The complete list is available in the clerk's office, and authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quick claim deeds. I would mo-
Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Uh, before you make a motion, uh, number 11 needs to be tabled.
That was gonna be my one.
We're not going to be able to meet that.
Yes, I'd like to remove number 11, um, for consideration alone, so, um, first, we'll take up items 10 and 12 on the consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion for 10 and 12?
Move to approve 10 and 12 on the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanims. Item 11, I would, motion to table item 11? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Could we give a little understanding of, of why we're tabling this?
Uh, a motion to table doesn't have discussion, but we can certainly after we vote. But you can't, there's no discussion with a, a motion to table. So, all in favor? All opposed? Abstention?
I'm sorry?
All opposed?
I'm not opposed, I just, I'd like to have some clarification, so I'll abstain from voting.
Well, just following the rules.
Uh, I understand, I'm just asking for some clarification.
Based on, just based on dates, that date's just not gonna work with scheduling. Because of the, because of the postings, we need to, which we're required by law to post, and we're not gonna have the information to be able to post it in a time to meet that deadline.
Fair enough, fair enough. What, what is the estimate of, of the new date?
Late June?
Fair enough.
Our, our goal is to have it prior to July 1 date, so that we don't have to do a continuing resolution, but based on timing of all of our workshops, and final budget meeting, and our council meetings, the, the dates just don't work for that June 13.
Okay, fair enough.
Motion pass. New business, item 13, presentation from the Director of the Sunrise Council for the Down East Maine's designation as a National Heritage Area, sponsored by Council Bill.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I will clarify, I'm not the Director of the Sunrise County Economic Council, but I am an employee of. I'll pretend for the day. So, thank you for having me, I'm gonna speak to you a little bit about the Down East Maine National Heritage Area. I'll do a little bit of reading of my notes, so that I can help get through this very quickly, because there's always so much to say about this. So, um, the Down East Maine National Heritage Area, uh, National Heritage Area is a designation that provides national recognition of an area's unique cultural and natural heritage, and its important contributions to the nation's collective heritage. This is a program that was created in 1984 during President Reagan's administration to provide communities with the tools and assistance they need to develop their own heritage area, heritage programs, that support their own community and economic development goals, driven by their own priorities. And the intention of this program when it was created is to help build a sustainable local economy by leveraging federal funds to create jobs, generate revenue for local governments, and invigorate local communities. So, National Heritage Area designation requires that there is a historic relationship between the people and the place, the people and the landscape, and that that relationship has contributed significantly to the cultural and natural heritage of the nation as a whole. That heritage story is requi- must be intact on the landscape, with plenty of assets still in existence that tell that story, and it is about, uh, working landscapes, so it's a living, working landscape where all of those aspects of our heritage are alive and well today on the ground, and there's plenty of opportunity to tell our story through those. So, the Down East Maine's nationally important story is based on the natural resources that supported early development and growth of American cities, such as fisheries, forest products, agriculture, wild blueberries, granite, and the boat-building trades that enabled the shipping of all of these resources around the world. And it also includes nature-based tourism and arts, and preservation of open space and access to natural resources. Now, what is a National Heritage Area, how is it created? It's created by legislation, uh, that is brought to Congress by local stakeholders and their congressional delegates. So in this case, it was, it was, um, inspired by farmers in the wild blueberry industry in Down East Maine, and they began conversations with King and Collins, and that is how it all began. So, National Heritage Areas, once they're brought to Congress, um, they will be, this, this Down East Maine National Heritage Area was designated and signed into law in January 2023, along with six other new National Heritage Areas. This was after two years of feasibility planning, to determine if the communities wanted to have a National Heritage Area, and to determine if the region had the assets that are required in order to put one in place. So some of the goals of the National Heritage Area Program are inspiring citizen engagement in heritage resources, in, in stewarding those resources and carrying them forward, the things that are important to people. It's about building regional collaboration amongst people around the whole entire region, and, um, giving them better capacity to so, to achieve their goals. I should step back and say that the Down East Maine National Heritage Area includes both Washington and Hancock Counties, in, in their entirety. Built around the county lines. The National Heritage Area Program brings financial benefits with the designation. Currently, the now 62 National Heritage Areas, currently there is up to $350,000 a year in federal funding available to those National Heritage Areas, that is intended to match local projects, things that are already happening, that local organizations are doing. Those federal funds become match through those, through the, uh, designation. And that amount of funds every year, that $350,000 up to, that is designate, that is determined every year by the, by Congress through the federal budget appropriation, appropriation process, so it can vary from year to year, and that is sort of the average of what is occurring these days. All of the program funds are held locally, and the projects are determined and managed by a collaboration of local heritage groups within that region. So, in this case, Sunrise County Economic Council has agreed to be the fiscal agent, and to provide administrative support to the heritage program, and to provide a staff person to coordinate that program, and the program will be guided by an advisory group, made up of people across the two counties, that represent all of the aspects of our heritage story. So, for example, we would, would have a, a wild blueberry grower, somebody who's involved in the fisheries industry, a teacher, an educator, um, somebody who's involved in, in tourism, economic development, that sort of thing. National Heritage Area designation does not, not mean that an area becomes a unit of the National Park Service. There is no ownership of land, um, the federal government has nothing to do with the way the heritage area is managed or operated, except that they provide matching funds to us, to do the projects that we want to do. Federal funds cannot be used, they are prohibited from being used to purchase land or buildings. So there is, just to take that off of people's minds, you, we cannot, the National Heritage Area cannot own land or buildings, and I know that that's been a concern of some people. They are not a tool to regulate land use. As you all know, land use is, land use designations are developed within your community, through your own processes, through your own community members, and a vote. National Heritage Area, we're not gonna come in here and tell you what to do. Nobody in that program is ever gonna come in here and tell you what to do. They do not create new expenses for a community to bear. As I said, they support existing programs, existing organizations who are conducting programs. It is a matching funds for an existing organization who wants to do things. The funds are provided to municipalities, schools, and nonprofits, who are conducting projects that are related to our regional, national heritage. So the first step in, in seeking heritage designation is conducting a feasibility study, which I mentioned took us two years, plus about a year of getting that fine-tuned and approved, and that feasibility study, which began in early March require, of 2020, requires extensive community input. Um, we have two counties, they're both very large, and I have heard from many people, why didn't I know about this for those two years? I welcome anyone who wants to participate in the following two years of management planning, um, to come to me and let me know that you want to participate. There will be information, and I'll, I'll talk about where you can find that in the next, in a minute. So, some of the goals of the National Heritage Area Program that align, already naturally align with, with our communities and our goals, are about heritage-based economic development, creating collaboration amongst our citizens and our communities, and long-term commitment to proactively shape our communities, inspiring stewardship of our heritage resources, whether that's cultural or natural. We often think of stewardship in relation to natural areas. Stewardship is also about, can also be, it's just about taking care of the things that matter to us. So this is also very culturally related, and nurturing active engagement in learning about and sharing the history of our communities. So this is about helping connect people who live here with the stories of the places in which they live, and ultimately, we hope that this will instill some sort of a, a sense of pride in place, especially amongst young people who may not know a lot about the history of our communities, where we've come from, how we got here, and we hope that this will help all of us think about where we want to go, and how we will use the resources that we have to get where we wanna go. So, new, National Heritage Areas can help develop new or improved amenities, unique settings, and educational and volunteer opportunities. The Down East Maine National Heritage Area has potential to support Ellsworth in some of the initiatives that are already ongoing, such as revitalization of the Historical Society Old Jail, the old Sheriff's Home and Jail. I recently wrote a support letter to, uh, application that they are putting in, um, based on their importance to the heritage aspects of our communities. So, um, Down East Cider and Cheese Festival, Art of Ellsworth, which happens on Maine Craft Weekend, those are both events that are important to Ellsworth, that are relevant to our cultural and natural heritage, and could potentially be part of the Heritage Area Program in the future. And bike pet connections between downtown and the Down East Sunrise Trail, and some of the walking and biking trails in the area. Those are, that's another example of the type, a, a project that could potentially be eligible for Heritage Area matching funds. Some of the community partners in Ellsworth that have already participated, and we hope will participate in the future, include the City of Ellsworth, of course, the schools, the Grand Theater, the Historical Society. Art of Ellsworth has been very active in the process all along, um, Wood Lawn Museum, Down East Scenic Railroad, the Down East Trail, Sunrise Trail Coalition, Hancock County Planning Commission was very active in this feasibility study over the first two years, and Cultural Alliance of Maine, which is now located here in downtown Ellsworth. The next steps for the Down East Maine National Heritage Area, we are embarking now, um, on what is the management planning phase. This is going to take us approximately two years. The management planning phase is while, the, the phase in which we, um, outline our plan, which will guide us through developing and promoting National Heritage Area infrastructure and programs. So the management plan takes us deep into these stories that support the feasibility study, the stories that we, the, the overarching heritage story has various sub-themes that support that story, and the management plan dives more deeply into those sub-themes. It allows the communities to come all together, um, to discuss what are the things that, what are these themes that we really want to bring to the surface of our story? Where do we wanna focus? And what are the types of projects that we would like to see implemented over the next several years, in order to support our heritage story? So, the management plan is ultimately setting us up with a work plan for what the Heritage Area Program will look like, where we will commit funds, and this must be completed within three years of designation, so thus we're, we're starting now, and even though we have about two years to complete the process, and then we need about a year of review process, there is a lot to talk about, and there are a lot of communities and people to reach in Washington and Hancock Counties, so we start now, and, uh, I hope for lots of input from all of you, and all of you, and as well. Thinking about next steps after the management plan is completed, uh, within three years of designation, theoretically we'll have that completed, um, submitted to the Department of the Interior, and then that will enable us to begin accessing the project match funds. So once our management plan is in place, we can then begin unrolling the program, which will be essentially a sub-granting program to communities around the region, like I said, municipalities, schools, and nonprofit organizations. The Down East Maine National Heritage Area Program will distribute the federal funds to organizations as cash match to their proposal, so it'll be a grant, a grant. You might come to the National Heritage Area with a grant proposal. If it's accepted, you'll receive matching funds, which will come directly from the Heritage Area Program. And thinking about your, um, upcoming comprehensive planning process, this is a good opportunity for you to think about and engage with the Heritage Area around, um, what are your, your, your values, and what are you looking to do in the future? How do you wanna guide your community and preservation of your way of life? I will leave with you two copies of the feasibility study. Please note that these have been updated, and there are a few chapters that are different from what is in this book, and those are available online, and I'm gonna leave with you also a much more extensive outline of what I just talked to you about, and there's information in there about where you can find those missing chapters, and how you can reach me.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say congratulations, it sounds really exciting.
Thanks.
Sounds like it was a lot of work.
Thank you. I would say congratulations to all of us, because it's kind of a big deal. Um, we're the first and only one in Maine, there's a bunch of others in the northeastern part of the country, but we're the first in Maine, and it truly is an opportunity for us to, um, become nationally recognized for the contributions that we have played in this country's formation. We know that there are many very, very important, special things about this place, but this puts eyes on us, and it will, uh, potentially, it, you will be able to use this designation to leverage other funds that you might have, any, not just the city, but any organization that's working on projects, schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Is there any questions?
You can ask a question.
I'm just curious, you mentioned matching funds, that's, I'm trying to, I didn't wanna ask in the wrong kind of, you were talking about matching funds, the City of Ellsworth is a partner now, why is the City of Ellsworth invested so far in this program?
The City of Ellsworth is, I didn't mean to make- The city of Ellsworth is, I didn't mean to make it sound like they're a partner. What I mean is that the organizations who can apply for matching funds, once the program is unrolled, are municipalities, schools, and nonprofits. So, for example, if the city of Ellsworth was interested in implementing a project in the downtown or wherever, that, um, perhaps was an educational opportunity for the people in the community or visitors to engage directly with the heritage, they would be eligible to apply for, for the matching funds for their project.
So, for example, say the $20,000 project, they apply for matching?
Correct. Yes.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, is there a staff in this organization?
Me, right now.
So, you've had the director?
Who funds that?
Sunrise County Economic Council is who I work for, and, and we have to provide matching funds, um, even for my time. So, we will be, we will be raising those funds through our own normal sources. We will not be going to you to ask for those monies, or you. Yes.
Though, we're, it sounds like we're a couple of years out from seeing any sort of matching funds.
Yes.
Can we expect to see anything, any sort of collaborations, or initiatives, or advertisements, anything like that, to take advantage of this designation before that happens?
Yes, we can start doing that now. And my job right now is to try to start putting together some of those sort of promotional pieces that we can all use to talk about this designation, why it's important to us. And although designation is not about tourism, it is about community and economic development. Tourism is, is a piece that's important to many of our communities. So, we would like to start telling people that we're a National Heritage Area, but not really get vigorous with promotion of it that way until we all have our feet on the ground and have started to implement some, obviously, we, we need to see hotels and housing and all of those things in place before we really promote tourism anyway. But, um, we will be very sensitive, as a National Heritage Area, to promote it, but not overly, so that it, we don't want it to put us in a place that we're not ready for, by any means. So, the website at the bottom of that document that I left behind, you can check there and watch for updates, and watch for meeting schedules. And I'm sure I will connect with you directly anyway. And if you need certain things, if, if you say, I would like to talk about this with XYZ, can you help me create some materials or talking points? I'm happy to, to help directly with that.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I wanted.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm curious, you said you have to do some fundraising through your normal channels. What's the normal channels?
Well, Sunrise County Economic Council is a nonprofit with a over four million-dollar budget. So, we have a lot of, um, we're, we're funded by, um, state entities. We do planning and development for communities with state funds that, um, support economic development committees around the state. Um, we also receive funds from, um, philanthropic foundations. Those are our, you know, some of our primary sources, but each of those categories are made up of many, many entities. So, we regularly, there are some that work with us every year, there are some that we apply to for special projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Item 14, public hearing in action on the issuance of business licenses. Uh, Madam Clerk, are they all renewals?
Yes.
And everything's all in order?
Yes.
The Eagles Lodge Incorporated, 278 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging house license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak on this, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Asset Management Incorporated, DBA Riverside Cafe, 150 on Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C license victueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak, let me do so. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second. You have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Josie's Country Store, DBA Josie's Country Store, 126 Surrey Road, for renewal of a city Class B license, amusement pool tables, liquor, and victueller, and renewal of a state class V club without catering malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second. You have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Josie's Country Store, DBA Josie's Country Store, 126 Surrey Road, for renewal of a city Class C license victueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 malt, liquor, wine, and spirits liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak on this, they may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Flexit Cafe and Bakery, 192 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C victueller and mobile vending license. Um, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody have like two comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 15, this is a long one. Public hearing in action on council order number 032304, request of the city planner to discuss and take action on proposed amendments to Chapter 56, which would modify existing standards to regulate solar energy systems and energy storage systems in the city. Proposed amendments to Chapter 56 include the following: refine existing permitted categories in Article 3, Section 307, table of land uses, clarify requirements for development in Article 8, Section 823, solar energy systems, and streamline the definition for standalone solar energy systems in Article 14 definitions. An additional proposed amendment to Chapter 56, Article 6, will be heard, amended the major use site plan development review applicability thresholds, um, which we'll hear in a second. So, we'll start with the solar.
Yep, go through the solar, and then to the one that's, uh, separate. But while we're doing ordinance amendments, the board wanted to put it forward. Uh, so, just to give some background on, you know, this solar journey that Ellsworth has been on, uh, started long before I got here, probably in 2020. Uh, the, it was originally when, uh, staff in the planning board worked on creating amendments to include solar in, uh, Ellsworth ordinances. Um, and so, the planning board council went through a, um, procedure to create those amendments. Um, and then shortly after, maybe about a year after, in 2021, is when the council voted to instill a moratorium on the medium and large-scale solar developments in Ellsworth. Uh, and then, and those voted to extend it, uh, in March of 2022. And then, in July of 2022, there was a planning board and city council joint workshop to discuss the upcoming changes to, uh, Chapter 56 regarding solar, uh, ordinance. And, uh, in October of 2022, the moratorium expired. And then, since then, over the course of October, November, December 2022, and January 2023, the planning board, uh, has worked to review and, uh, get to a point where they already recommend additional amendments, uh, to Chapter 56 regarding solar. And that brings me to where we are today. The board has recommended, and after a couple of months' wait, uh, we're here. So, I think the easiest way, so that I don't drone on too long, but still give enough information for everyone, is to kind of go through the, uh, ordinance amendment outline that I provide in your packets, um, describe each one, and then if there are additional questions after I go through each individual, after each individual item, I think, open for questions from the council, and then I can move to the next item after that. So, most of the changes start with, uh, Article 14, our definitions. Originally, there were , uh, three definitions for standalone solar, uh, projects, for small scale, medium scale, and large scale. They were all based on varying sizes, and what was affected by this was, uh, medium and large scale, uh, solar projects were not allowed in certain zones that small scale was. Um, but that was, the only difference between medium and large was their definitions, their uses were the exact same. And we also found that, um, small-scale solar at this, for standalone, didn't really happen. They were too small, um, so they weren't really coming to planning board or into existence. So, it was just easier to encapsulate them on one definition and create the, um, standalone solar energy system definition. Um, so if it's primarily serving an off-site user, uh, it's counted as a standalone solar energy system. And then, this affected the Article 3 amendment, which is the table of uses. So, as I, uh, mentioned before, small had different uses, or allowed uses that medium and large did. Uh, but now, they've all been compacted, and they've been reflected as the allowed uses that medium and large had. So, it's more restrictive technically than the previous, um, solar, uh, uses. But again, small never really came into existence, so in effect, nothing really changed. And I'll stop there for questions.
So, just to clarify, so, this is an area that raised a lot of questions. When you talk about small, you're, and off-site, you're talking about a small project in size that's selling the energy somewhere else, it's not personal use.
Correct.
And so, this ordinance does not impact if somebody wants to, um, use solar and set up something for their, um, home or business. They're able to do that, that's not impacted by this ordinance.
Yeah. So, again, so if it's, so, yeah, so the off-site user is someone that, it's either the power grid, or, um, a user that's not on an adjacent, uh, lot of land. So, uh, if you want to put solar on your homes, doesn't affect you. If a business wants to put solar on their roof, it doesn't affect them, or somewhere on their lot, it doesn't affect them, as long as they're the primary user of that energy.
Thank you.
And then, next would be the, a bit more of the nitty-gritty, which is the, uh, changes to the performance standards. Um, so essentially affecting things like the required buffer between, uh, this is actually not just for solar, but it was inspired by solar. Um, the buffer between a non-residential use and a residential use, which would be vegetation and space in between those two projects. So, if you live next to a solar farm, there will be at least some type of vegetation and trees blocking your view of it, so that doesn't necessarily affect your everyday life in that way. Um, and then additionally, um, it discusses the different dimensional calculations and requirements for solar projects, uh, fencing requirements, and the establishment of vegetation. We also got into, um, the process for decommissioning, um, which is if the site is abandoned, or if the site is going to be shut down after the life cycle of the, um, of the solar, uh, panels, or if, like the, if they're leasing land from someone, and the landowner decides not to renew that lease after a certain time. Um, and the company is unable to remove the solar project, there's money in escrow for the city to have them pay for it to be removed. Um, so, the city is not fronting the cost of that. And then, also, it just can happen, and the land can be put to better use, um, after the expiration of that solar project. And, shh, shh, shh. Any particular questions so far? I was going to go a little bit more in depth with the decommissioning, um, but there's questions about buffers in particular. Um, there were expanded requirements, really, in the outside of the urban core. So, if you're in the urban core, the existing standards remain the same, which are, um, less vegetation is required, just because there's a lot smaller lot sizes, there's less space in between lots. In downtown, you have buildings right up next to each other. Uh, but then outside of the urban core, where there's a lot of residential homes and neighborhoods, there's the requirement to increase that buffer size so that people living don't have to be right next to a, a business or look at it all the time. And I think the major change for decommissioning was referencing a, uh, was referencing the standards that were put in place by, um, the federal government and their, the Office of Energy. Um, they just listed a number of expectations of what should be included in the decommissioning costs, um, to determine that price, uh, because it was kind of varying from state to state. So, uh, the planning board thought that a national standard that probably won't change, um, too often. But if it does, you have something to reference to, um, consistently. It should be what was followed. And, shh, shh, shh. All right, any questions on those? Yes.
Sure. One of these solar farms decides, well, the landowner, whoever decides, they can't do it anymore after the lease time. Does money in an escrow account to clean it all up if they decide they can't clean it up?
Yeah. So, it has to be returned to, um, aside from, like, if they cut down a lot of trees, they doesn't have to, they don't have to plant all the trees they cut down, but it has to return to the land as if solar had not been there. So, removing all equipment, all nuts and bolts, um, but essentially be a flat field left at the end of it.
Does anybody like, is there like any, um, because we have one that we, it's a transfer station. Is that like paid any dividends, or?
Yeah.
It has.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, you've seen significant savings in our electrical.
My biggest question was always, what's going to happen when they're done with them? Who's going to clean it up?
Yeah. I mean, so, once it's cleaned up, uh, preferably, it's the developer, if they're still around and in touch with us, they'll come and clean it up. But if not, that's what the escrow accounts for, then the city can hire out.
I think there's going to be a lot of come and go with them, and
Changing names.
Better get the escrow count.
Yep. And so, uh, the agreement has to be, again, reviewed by city, or, one of the new additions is it has to be reviewed by the city's legal counsel before, uh, we enter into that agreement, too.
Mr. Chairman, just answer Mr. Lyons' question a little bit.
John Dela, planning board chair.
I checked with Larry Gardner. Once those, those are the only two, uh, solar farms that are currently in operation. I mean, besides the savings that the city gets from, from the electricity, uh, I'm talking with Larry Gardner, okay, what has building those solar farms done to the value of the property? Uh, and one on the right side, going up 180, went from a land value of about $60,000 to $120,000, but it's, it's minimal tax increase because it was in tree growth, I believe. Uh, but there's also, he assesses, there's about $2 million worth of electrical equipment there, which the landowner, he asked Larry to explain it. Uh, it's one of the state business reimbursement programs. And so, he said, on, on that one particular solar farm, uh, we get back about $31,000 in, in revenue because of the $2 million worth of solar equipment that is there. So, there is a little
Plus, we also save on the electric.
So, there is a little increase in revenue to the city for these solar farms.
You say is that tax revenue or revenue coming from the electricity?
The personal property tax on the equipment.
It's an increase in its property tax, $31,000.
No, that comes as a reimbursement from the state to the city because of the electrical equipment that is there. The, the landowner, it's a state program. Tammy could probably explain.
So, it come in as a, as a property tax reimbursement?
It is. It's, um, revenue that, um, the city budgets for every single year for personal property, um, that goes through, it filters through the state, and we budget for it. So, it looks like we'll, we get $31,000 more than, than we have because of the, the solar farm.
I think it was like personal property tax that you used to pay in electricity.
Okay. So, that's, then the money to the electricity generation on top of that?
Mm-hmm. Yep, savings. And that's a Glenn thing, because I understand it a little bit better.
Do we know what that's going to be?
Savings in electricity?
Yes.
I'm the only person to ask about that.
Yeah. Uh, we don't, I mean, I don't have exact figures, but we've seen significant savings in the school department, and the wastewater treatment plant, and the water treatment plant. Those are our biggest consumers of electricity in the city. Um, and for, for the summer months, they don't even have an electrical bill, because we, we purchase so many solar credits that covers, entirely wipes out their, their electrical bills. So, uh, we don't, it, because of the way it's broken up, we have over 80 accounts, electrical accounts throughout the city. So, for me to sit here and
Oh, that's a
And tell you what each savings is on each account. But with the, in the budget process, we will be able to have on each account, but with the, in the budget process, we will be able to have a better idea of what our savings have been across the board for FY '23 as we budget for FY ' '24 savings.
And is that in the, the general for the city and your electrical bill, which are your credit?
Yes, yep, it's applied. So we purchase the credits, and then the credits are applied to our electrical bill. So if we had a $100 electrical bill and we had the credits, our electrical bill would be zero.
So Matt, I just have a question about, and John, too. So the escrow, is that being held at the state, or is the City of Ellsworth gonna be holding that, those escrow funds, because?
The funds are gonna be held by the City of Ellsworth.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
And are those, those funds automatically transferable, so if the company changes hands, that automatically stays with the city, there's no giving that back and requiring the other company to?
Yep, so it says in, it's Article VIII, and then 825.2D, and then it's Roman numeral six, very last part is financial assurance provisions must be noted on the final site plan and must be transferred with the development if it is sold.
We also require that the developer get the decommissioning plan reviewed by the city lawyer to make sure it's on the up and up.
You say it was gonna be an escrow account?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a bond or is there an actual amount that's going to be?
It can be, I think, a bond, but it says, the applicant should demonstrate in the form of a performance bond, surety bond, letter of credit, or parent company guarantee, or other form of financial assurance, as may be acceptable to the administrator, that upon the end of the use, end of the useful life of the facility, the applicant will have the necessary financial assistance in place for 100% of the total cost of decommissioning. And the funds for decommissioning must also be securely made available for use by the City of Ellsworth in the event of abandonment per plo. So it has to be pretty fluid, or liquid, sorry, that it can be pulled upon.
That sounds like there's some options there?
Different bond options.
Does the city get to, does it make what they're wanting?
So it is, it, it does allow for the administrator to determine which is most acceptable.
Administrator being the?
Being the planning board. Yeah.
So just, I know we're kind of having informal, but because the public is watching, if we have questions, I'm gonna have to ask you to go to the mic so everybody can hear it or repeat the question, either way, just so that everybody knows what you're answering.
Yeah, sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do other types of buildings and development require this same money for decommissioning?
It, so it depends. There's actually always the option for us to require money for decommissioning, we just don't employ it very often, but for other programs that have hazardous wastes or potentially dangerous, maybe dangerous isn't the right word, but long, projects that could have long-lasting effects on the land that they're being placed on, we usually would require some type of decommissioning.
I just wanted to say I appreciate your work and the planning board's work, not only, you know, considering future uses, not only in the escrow account and decommissioning, but in things like runoff and use of, you know, limiting use of herbicide and pesticide, using existing tree growth as buffer systems. It's just a great consideration of ecological consequences, so I appreciate that. I have a question about public engagement. So at this point, when we're looking at these suggestions, have public's opinion considerations, questions been integrated into that?
Yes.
Or is the hearing this evening time for that?
So the four planning board meetings were the ideal time before a recommendation is made to council. I mean, if somebody were to provide public comment tonight, convince the board that that needs to be integrated, then the board, or, sorry, the council could send it back to the planning board to incorporate those edits, so the public can also provide comment right now. But there have been four, several meetings where I have, we have received public comment and integrated them where the board felt made sense throughout the process.
I can't recall the name, but it was a lady that's involved in the green plan, so that's some information in the beginning, and one was a link to the Audubon Society who had a, had a model policy for solar farms. And reading through that, there's several items from that that we incorporated into, and some of it stuff was, you know, the items that we hadn't thought of before. And it was a whole process to us, you know, starting a couple of years ago, and, oh, geez, I didn't think of that, that's a great idea, let's put it in a policy. So, so we've incorporated and, you know, from, from the Audubon and from other sources.
So I've seen a gentleman move around, obviously wants to say something, so.
He was a big help.
Did you ask?
Sorry, excuse me, my name's Chris Byers. I'm, I'm over my cold, my voice is just shot. I, I work as a solar industry professional in Maine and have permitted two projects in the City of Ellsworth that haven't been built yet, but, so have some experience here, working in your community for probably about two years. I've worked on about 100 projects across Maine and helped numerous towns with their ordinance process. So I helped the planning board, probably been helping you guys maybe for six months or so, helped to draft this and provide feedback, and I really appreciate Matt's willingness to let me participate in that process. Just as somebody that sees how this is done across the state, I felt like I had something to offer, and they did a great job of integrating that and even asking good questions and pushing back at times. I just have one point of clarification on the decommissioning. I think I heard something that may, may not, I want to just clarify. My understanding is that the ordinance allows, or it requires a form of surety to be provided, but the City of Ellsworth will not hold that, that physical bond, or letter of credit or whatever it is. This is the way it works, and I think this jives with what the proposed ordinance is here, Matt. The DEP has a decommissioning permit. Every solar project over three acres needs to obtain one of these. That's a new permit and maybe something that wasn't in place when you first contemplated your first round of the ordinance, so that is now a thing. Everybody needs that, all projects do. The form of surety is held in Augusta in a safe, so the physical bond. What the City of Ellsworth, I think, is asking is that they be named as a beneficiary. So it means that the City of Ellsworth or the DEP could take those funds if certain criteria are met, but I just want to clarify, you would not actually hold the money here in the city itself. It's still the same guarantee, but some towns don't ask to be a beneficiary, they're fine with the DEP just handling it. I think you guys are going a step further, which is totally fine, by naming yourself as a beneficiary, so maybe that clarifies some of what you were asking, but just figured that would help.
Thank you.
So I'm open for questions, too, but again, thanks for your help and letting me participate.
Not on solar in particular.
So more questions on solar?
I was gonna wait until the end, but this seems to be the appropriate time. I actually have two questions. One is maybe a little history lesson that, that I was given, and hopefully it was correct, that the City of Ellsworth's first project was on Route 180. Is that correct? And the city agreed to buy the power from that project, by the credits that would resolve it in savings on the bill, correct? That made that project go forward. Is that fair to say?
I guess, it was before my time, so I don't.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, we...
So my question would be this, if, if, if what you have before us tonight was in place at that time, would that project have gone forward?
It's tough for me to say, as I wasn't here there either, but I imagine it could have gone forward, there may have just been adjustments to its application, different requirements are gonna be required moving forward, except for the buffer administration and that sort of thing with buffer along the road, so it could have.
Thank you.
I don't know exactly when the negotiation between the city and the developer took place to buy the electricity from, from that solar farm. However, that was never brought before the planning board. If that took place before our approval of that project, it didn't come before us, we had no knowledge of that, so I don't know 100% for sure, Steve, if the city actually entered into that contract prior to the planning board giving approval to that, you know, we would have to check dates on when it was approved and when the city signed the contract.
From what you can see, would, if that project was before the planning board today, with this new regulation that's before us, would that pass?
Yes.
It would?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't have affected that particular project?
No.
Okay, all right. The second question I have is, what does this do to the landowner? The guy paying the tax bill, the guy that wants to contract with a solar project? What does that do to our, the taxpayer that has the field or wherever that they want to put one of these? What have we done to him?
Sure, well, I don't know, we would have done anything. They agree with the private contract to allow or rent their land to the solar developer. You know, the city doesn't choose where these go, they often contract privately, and then when the development is about to get built or wants to get built, they come to the planning board just because of the size of the, of the project. But I do believe the private, personal, or the personal property tax discussion that was happening earlier, this, I don't believe the state or the city charges personal property tax on those, the equipment on that land, so the landowners are gonna charge more for having a solar farm on their land, but the, we get reimbursed to 50% because we don't charge for that personal property tax.
So is, is the landowner, is this gonna prevent any projects that, is this gonna narrow down the number of projects so Mr. and Mrs. Landowner can't lease their farm land, or?
No, I mean, so again, like, it's, there are certain areas where it's restricted, such as downtown neighborhood, places where there probably isn't space for this type of project, or you don't really want it, like where there's a lot of people living, right in the middle of a neighborhood. But in the rural area, you know, if they choose the contract, they can privately with a solar developer to lease their land for this purpose. You know, there are other considerations, if there's lots of wetlands, they might not be able to do it, or the size of project that they want, but there's, the city is not stopping the private landowner from entering a contract for this.
I think, Steve, too.
Thank you.
One of the biggest limiting factors, and Chris could probably say if I'm right or not, but is how close that particular property is to a high-power line, because if it's too far away, it's just not economically feasible for, for the developer to do that. If they have to run a whole high-power line, however many miles, it's just not gonna happen.
Sure, sure. But we're not, we're not crippling the farmer that wants to stop milking the cows and start leasing his land in this project here.
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, before we move into the second one, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, if anybody would like to speak on this matter, they may do so, just go to the podium. No, the, just, just the solar part, we're just doing the solar first, and then so if you want to speak on the solar, you may do so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
We should make a motion on this before moving on.
Yes.
Move to approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance, Article III, Zoning Districts, Article VI, Site Development Plan.
You're, you wanna leave that one off?
Not, not, not Article VI.
Just skip Article VI?
Yes.
Article III, Zoning Districts, Article VIII, Performance Standards, and Article 14, Definitions.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I just appreciate all the work the planning board has done, it's just been a lot of work, I think, over the last couple of years, so thank you.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion, one, opposition, motion passes. Second portion of the presentation is Chapter 56, Article VI, Amending the Planning Board Major Use Site Plan Development Review Threshold from New Construction or Expansion of Non-Residential Floor Area Greater Than 5,000 Square Feet to 3,000 Square Feet of Non-Residential Floor Area. Demolished or previously demolished floor area will not be credited toward the calculation of new floor area.
So I'll just, I'll provide a similar overview, and I'll ask John to come up and kind of provide a history for the board's request. So again, so right now, there are two types of site development, minor and major. If it's a minor site development, it stays in the code office, and where they work with Lori to move their project forward, there are still certain requirements they must meet, but there's not the public hearing phase that there is with the planning board. And if it's 5,000 feet, square feet of non-residential or above, is one of the thresholds to require that the project automatically come to the planning board and go through that process, depending on what it is. And the planning board is making requests to lower that threshold from 5,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet. You know, Ellsworth continues to go, undergo high development rates, and it allows for a more public and transparent process, and the planning board representing what they hear from the public, think it's important for a number of these smaller projects that still have a higher impact on the area and traffic or stormwater to come before the board, and so that's why the request is before you today for that portion. The second portion, which is not allowing demolished or to be demolished floor area to be credited towards the calculation of new floor area, that kind of already exists. When Lori and I worked through a project before, to determine if it was at the planning board or not, we kind of make a call on whether or not the project has such an impact that it, if it's, you know, if you include that floor area or not, if it's gonna make a huge difference, but this would just codify it, that, that demolished floor area doesn't really count, if you're doing demolition building and build a new one, it's a clean slate, that new building is looked at in its entirety, regardless of what the previous floor area in that, that lot or that pad was. John, did you want to come up?
This whole conversation basically started back several years ago under a previous code enforcement officer, when I read in the paper that Convenient MD had received a building permit. Now, I know it's a Convenient MD, if it went through the planning board, it most likely would have been permitted, but the building permit said it was a building of 5,500 square feet, and I'm like, well, why didn't it come to the planning board? Again, it was a previous code enforcement officer, decided that, if you remember, it was First National Bank, the First National Bank was torn down, and Convenient MD was built approximately in the same location. So he decided that that was basically a renovation of a, let's say, 3,000 square-foot building, they added another 2,500 square feet, and the current, brand-new Convenient MD is approximately 5,500 square feet. I said, I think, this is not right, but by that time, the permit had been issued, I began the discussion with the planning board, and it was, like I said, we've been talking about this for about three years, and we just felt that, that the 5,000 square feet was a little too high, we should lower it. I mean, currently, code enforcement officer has the capability of a project under 5,000 square feet, sending it to the planning board, and she did that on the new car wash on High Main, High Dean Street, which was, I totally agreed with it, and it was actually, it opened up discussion with the neighbors, who, if a building permit had been granted to the developer without coming to the planning board, the neighbors basically wouldn't have known anything about it, they would not have had any input into the building process, and the developer was good to work with. I mean, it was a give-and-take, I mean, initially, he wanted the building, the car wash to be on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, the neighbors, there were quite a few people, I mean, the planning board doesn't draw in many participants, but this was one meeting that there was plenty of neighbors there. He backed off from that, I think he's now open till 8:00 PM, I believe, he reduced the number of vacuums on site just to reduce the noise. We changed the location of the building a little to allow more driveway space queuing into it, and so I think at this point, as, as much development is going on, and it's, I asked Matt to look up how many buildings in... Matt to look up how many buildings in the last couple of years between 3,000 and 5,000 square feet have been, been permitted, and he'll get to that in a minute. But, I mean, there's a lot of development going on. I mean, my goal is to make sure that adjacent landowners, adjacent properties are, the effects on them are minimized, negative effects are minimized. The negative effects on the city as a whole are minimized, and, and the taxpayers over the city, you know. If somehow development creates a huge stormwater issue that, that we don't have the capability, you know, do we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, or do we put it on the developer? But, so the car wash was one example. We currently have a project before us, coming as a sketch review, on the, on a lot next to Hampton Inn. Now, right now, it's over the 5,000 square-foot threshold, but if, if you read anything about it, there's going to be a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, and another retail space. Now, if that developer decided to take out that retail space, that would drop that below 5,000 square feet. And he could very well avoid planning board, although I talked with Lori today, and he said, oh, no, I'd send it to the planning board. But it's that type of projects, we want to be able to have a little more oversight, too. Some people may think, well, 3,000 square feet, 3,000, 5,000 is too small. But by the same token, we have a developer that does a lot of apartment houses in Ellsworth, and no negative comments on him. But, I mean, he's basically 12-unit, three-story, and the footprint is, his building is about 60 by 60 roughly, between 3,500 and 4,000 square feet. Now, it's a residential property, it's housing, so it's required to come to the planning board. Okay? But if you have a commercial property of the same size, it's not required to come to the planning board. But it could very well have the same impacts, could have same impacts on stormwater, it could have the same impacts on traffic. I mean, that coffee shop and sub-shop, that's going to be a big traffic draw. And I think you all know the current coffee shops we have in town, drive by them at certain times in the day, and you're dealing with traffic. And so that's why I would, I would just think it's, it's a good idea for the city to have that capability, to give a little more oversight to projects that are below that 5,000 square-foot threshold.
I can go into the projects, but I did the past three-ish years that would have fallen within that 3,000 to 5,000 non-residential square floor area, square-foot area. And it was about three projects that would have had to come. So this wouldn't have an oversized impact on development. So the, and one of the projects was the car wash, so it did come to planning board anyway. You know, my job is really to listen to both sides. So John just explained, the planning board and the public's, or allow the neighbors and the butters to use that way here, that they would like a voice, they'd like a chance to participate in the process for approval of these projects. When I talk to developers, you know, when they first hear it, they're pretty not happy about it. But we also have this problem where 5,000 square feet is large enough, where if you changed your size to 4,500 square feet, you technically don't have to come to planning board, but the negative impacts you'd have on the area around you and the neighbors living around you are still just as big. And so, you know, say Lori and I disagreed on whether or not something that's 4,500 square feet should go to planning board or not, it's ultimately her call. And so then it wouldn't go through that process, that public process, that what if it had to come to the planning board? Whereas if a project is 3,000 square feet, you should, and you don't want to come to the planning board, so you make it 2,500 square feet, the negative impacts on the area around you are still going to be fairly minimal. That, you know, neighbors do get in the butternose through the minor site development review process, but even if there's not adjustments made, they're like, hopefully it's not so outsized that it affects their daily lives. But I also understand the market right now, which is, planning board can be expensive because it's, or it pushes your timeline way out, because there's not enough surveyors in the area, there's not enough traffic engineers in the area. So it's an extra thing you have to think about, where if you want to get something done in four months, also then it's going to take eight months because you're waiting for professionals. You know, it's just something for the council to weigh, what's, what matters more.
Counselor, Helen.
I'd like to say thank you for giving us real-life examples. Standing here and telling everybody about 5,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, but giving us real-life examples like you have done and you have done is a great help, because we can see the real, the real issue here, not just square-footage issues. Thank you.
Could you, sorry, could you clarify the, sort of the footprint issue? So if somebody takes a slab, for example, down to the original footprint and rebuilds, but it's a smaller size, you're still considering the original size as triggering the planning board?
No. So if, so say there's a, a plot that has a 3,000, or let's say a 6,000 square-foot building on it, and someone buys it, and they want to demolish that 6,000 square-foot building and build a 4,000 square-foot building, then their non-residential floor area, if it is, if it is 4,000 square feet, will be the 4,000 square feet. You don't include the 6,000 square feet. But in the same token, if your building, if there was a previous building of 2,300 square feet, or let's say 2,500 square feet for your numbers, and then you buy the plot, knock it down, and build a 5,000 square-foot building, you don't get credited for the previous 2,500 that was there. It's now a fresh 5,000, 5,000 square-foot floor area.
Gotcha.
I mean, another, another, like I should say, the current plan, if somebody had a 3,000 square-foot building and wanted to actually renovate it, add to it, not tear down, I mean, they could add another 3,000 square feet and not come to the planning board. So that's one, one thing I'm concerned about, too, is, is, off the top of my head, I can't think of what happened, but you want to kind of prepare for the worst scenario, is that if somebody does that, you know, has a 3,000 square-foot building, a 4,000 square-foot building, and comes in and adds another 4,000 square feet to it, now you're up to an 8,000 square foot. Couple of years later, they want another, add another 4,000 square feet, now you're up to 12,000. At what point are you trying to limit it in a way?
Yeah, I could, and I can understand the demolished piece, that, you're really starting with a new building.
Correct.
That, but that makes sense to me. The place that I kind of want to get clarity on is, if I understand it correctly, there is discretion for, to push something to the planning board. The city maintains that already.
Yes.
So I have a hard time supporting something that puts more burden on small development and developers for the city. I think it's not the, certainly not from an economic perspective, and it's not the right time to stifle development. We need more development, and to, to push that down to that 3,000 square-foot threshold, I think is, is overly burdensome. I think it's going to drive development away. You said there's only some three projects. You have the discretion now to push projects to the, to the planning board. I don't think this makes sense for the, the city of Ellsworth. I don't think it's good business sense, I don't think it's good economic sense, and I don't think there's a need for it. It sounds like this is coming out of one project and a reaction to it, and I, I, I just don't think it's, it's the right time. I, I think we have enough resources and enough ability, if there's a project that's going to impact, to push it to the planning board. But to put this as an absolute 3,000 square feet must go to the planning board, I just, I, I don't think it's a good idea.
I think in one regards, Lori's capability to send a project to the planning board, I mean, if there's one project now that's not going to come to the planning board, that's going to, is 4,950 square feet. You know, that was her call, I'm not going to argue with it, with it, but, okay, that's obviously that person is going around it, you know, the ordinance. But keep in mind, too, is that, you know, you get a different code enforcement officer, may not have sent that, that car wash to the planning board, depending on what his or her decision was. And, yeah, I wouldn't have been surprised if the previous code enforcement officer would have not sent that to the planning board. I mean, that decision is totally on, on Lori right now.
And one comment I would just make is, regardless of what size, you make it 5,000, 4,000, 3,000 square feet, I think the, the point is to create clarity for a developer. So even in the short time I've been in the planning office, I've had a lot of developers come who think just because they're below 5,000, they automatically don't have to go to planning board. But like, they might have outsized traffic issues, and when Lori and I discuss that with them, they get really frustrated and disappointed because the, you know, they thought they won't have to go to planning board just because of the size of their project, but they're creating 150 new traffic, daily traffic counts on that road that maybe isn't built to handle that. And the planning board is the time for them to kind of work through that, and then figure out how the road needs to be upgraded.
Yeah, but that, that's on, that clarity is, to me, is on the developer, because I think most developers understand those, that piece of it. The, the issue is the cost. So how much cost are we going to burden smaller developers? If you have a larger development, your return is probably going to be much greater than it is if you have a, a smaller development. That, that's part of this equation, and, and how much are we willing as a city to say, too bad developer, you're going to incur all these new costs, it's going to slow down the development, which pushes it out, which increases costs, all those factors. And so, cost over clarity, I think cost wins every time in my eyes in terms of the size of development. Counselor, Helen.
I guess I, I have this question. Later on in the evening, we're going to talk about item number 23, which is a Business Attraction Plan. Okay? And how does this fit into the Business Attraction Plan? You've got, you've got one arm looking to attract business, and we've got one arm not wanting to discourage it, but wanting a little more oversight. Where do these two plans come together?
Sure. So I'm not going to speak to the Business Attraction Plan as it's Jana's role.
Right.
And, you know, I want, the Business Attraction wasn't necessarily considered in this ordinance amendment.
I understand.
But, you know, so I did look at the surrounding towns and, you know, what their record, or thresholds are, and it's kind of a mixed bag. I mean, Bar Harbor's threshold is lower than 3,000 square feet before they have to go to planning board. Bangor's is, I think, lower than 5,000 square feet, but more than 3,000 square feet. So it's, I think it's just kind of a mixed bag, which is why I don't know if it'll necessarily have an outsized impact on development. But to Dale's point about whether, who this is impacting, I think whether you leave the clarity a little murky, or if you put this on, or if you approve this for 3,000 square feet, you're only really impacting small local developers negatively one way or the other. And I think it's just a good starting point to discuss, you know, whether, again, whether you approve this or not, I think there's going to be further discussions on how do we make this process easier for smaller developers, because the big guys don't care. They'll come in regardless of what the square footage is, or regardless what the requirements are, and they're fine paying whatever and getting the job done, because that's their goal. But again, if we make a small developer have to pivot last minute to planning board because Lori and I determined that, even though it's below 5,000 square feet, has an outsized impact on the community, they're then scrambling for funds to try and get their job done. But if they knew ahead of time, they could have planned for it, if it was 3,000 square feet. Or if you make it 3,000 square feet, you are inviting more commercial projects just to come to the planning board. Yes, they'll have the time to think about that and consider the cost of doing that, but then it may prevent some people from actually moving forward with projects.
I think in one regards, I mean, for the, for the last couple of years, I don't know exactly how many years, and Matt looked at it, but there's only been a couple of projects in that 3,000 to 5,000 square-foot range that we're, we're dealing with. And if there's been that few, you know, how are we impacting small developers, you know, to a great negative extent? They haven't been in that type of project.
Well, the other side of the argument is then, why have the ordinance? I mean, it, that's, it's just both ways, and I don't mean that, I just, it's one of those things that, I can see your point, but I mean, it goes, it's one of those places where you go. Counselor, Hanson.
Yeah, I guess the way I'm looking at it is if we keep it at 5,000 as it is, we may be protecting more the small developer. If we push it to 3,000, we're protecting the neighbors and maybe the city in terms of things like stormwater. I think that's a reasonable way of thinking about it.
I, yes, I, I do.
So I guess I feel comfortable.
We've approved lately, I think that's been a big part of it.
So I feel comfortable supporting it, and because I would, I would choose to support the city and/or the neighbors over the developers, if I had to make a decision on that.
So, because this is a public hearing, I'm going to, I'm going to open the public hearing so that we can hear from citizens if they want to speak.
I think Jana wanted to address it.
If I can.
Yeah. From the economic development standpoint.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a couple clarifying points. So let's say that coffee shop with a drive-through was only 1,000 square feet, okay? But we're still concerned about the trips and the traffic. There is a catch-all within the ordinance that would force that coffee shop to come before the planning board. So there is, because it would generate a certain amount of trips, that it would probably have to get a traffic movement permit through the main department of transportation, which means automatically it goes to a planning board review. So there are elements within the ordinance that if something is going to have an undue burden on the city and its resources, or have an impact on neighbors, that there's the ability to then force it to go to planning board. So there's one section that says, regardless of the threshold, the code enforcement officer and the planner speak and say, if there's significant concerns to stormwater, if there's significant concerns to the neighbors, if there's significant concerns regarding traffic, if there's significant concerns regarding noise, big feature items that would cause a significant concern to surrounding properties, then the planner and the code enforcement officer would have that discussion, and regardless of this, if it was 5,000 or 3,000 square feet or less, it would get bumped up to the planning board review. Now, that puts the discretion on two staff people, so the conversation here is whether you codify that, or you allow that discretion to happen through two staff people having that discussion. But I will tell you that a coffee shop with a drive-through, no matter what, would have to go to planning board because of a traffic movement permit. So I just wanted to, like, assure the public and the council and everyone here that there's no way that that would ever just be permitted through the code office. The other piece I wanted to bring up is that, even though it doesn't go to a full planning board review, which would have at least two public hearings as part of that process, the code enforcement officer has her own process for minor site development review, which also notifies all the butters within either 200 or 500 feet of the property, which is exactly what the planning office has to do, of the development coming into this town, they still are able to come to the code office, or the planning office, or my office, to have the discussion as to what that development means and what it would do to them. So I don't want there to be any misguidance here, that there still isn't a, a level of review, and there isn't still a concern in terms of notifying the butters and the neighbors that a project is coming. We still go through those processes, it's just the difference is, one is made public through a board, and the planning board, and the other is through staff office. And then, like I said, there are certain developments, like a car wash, which has significant concern for traffic, stormwater, being a, a burden on its neighbors, that regardless of what the size was, would come to the planning board. And I realize that that's at the discretion of the planner and the code enforcement officer, but there's some things where it's like, it's obvious that that's going to be an impact. If Lori had sent that out as a minor site, she would have probably got a lot of pushback from neighbors to the fact that she would say, okay, this is too much, we're going to bump it up to a major site, and it will go to the planning board. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then, in terms of the Business Attraction Plan, it's my understanding that the threshold actually used to be less, and in 2011, they did the Business Attraction Plan that we're trying to now update. There are a series of recommendations that came out of that, and one of the recommendations was that the threshold should be bumped up to five, well, higher, it was determined to be 5,000 square feet. And so in 2013, when there were major changes to the land use ordinance, that was one of the amendments that was made at that time, and that's what we've had since. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Now, I will open, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak, please go to the podium.
John Monahan, 157 Shore Road. As a former developer, businessperson in the area, I appreciate Dale's comments on that. Time is money for small businesspeople, and anything we can do to expedite the process without sacrificing the quality and the conditions in the process that makes it easier for the developer, the person to do it, I'm in favor of. I'm opposed to dropping it to 3,000 square feet. of. I'm opposed to dropping it to 3,000 square feet. I believe the, as you've heard from Jana and other people here today, we have alternate sources right now to cover everything. So I think we're already well protected. And I hate to see a small business person under a tough time constraint because time is money. And when you're a small guy trying to wear several hats and make these put together, it makes it very, very cumbersome to put these deals together. I know it doesn't sound like much when you talk about it, but the difference between going to the code enforcement, to Lori or whoever the code enforcement is right now, and going before the planning board and extra meetings and extra stuff is a burdensome on the development like that. So I think we've already got the issues that everybody's talking about why it should go to 5,000 are already covered. I think it's unnecessary. I believe when people buy a piece of property, it's their property. They have a right and a freedom to operate it the way they should, within reasonable constraints like that. And I believe it's the constitutional rights of any small business person, whether it's a private residence or whether it's a commercial residence, to have the right to use the property as they want it to, within reason. I think there's plenty of rules and regulations right now with our current code enforcement. And I want to support Dale's position on that. I think he summarized it very accurately on that right there. Thank you very much.
Steve and Shay, I'd like to agree with John and Dale. And I think that the current ordinances and rules are adequate to protect us from all the things that we need to be protected from. And changing in the ordinance to the proposed changes would just place a burden on simple projects and they may not go forward. I don't need to repeat everything that's been said, but I will say that I've heard from some developers that if this goes through, they won't be doing anything else. It's already, it's already tough enough for a guy to get going, as you pointed out, Dale. And I think that, you know, as far as a renovation goes, if you've got 4,000 feet in an existing building and you're going to add 1,500 to it, Lori can see when the plans are submitted to her that that area is under renovation. And at that point, she can ask for it to go to the planning board. So I think we've got all the protection we need. And I would say, let's leave well enough alone. If I was going to do anything, I think I'd send the charge back to the planning board to try to simplify things for developers and still protect the city.
Steve, I'd just like to point out that Facebook is blowing up right now because you and I are in total agreement about something.
Well, you know, stranger things have happened, Dale.
Ding 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 ding.
I would just say that I'm not in favor of any limits, any business from going forward with a project. And if anything, I'd raise the square footage up instead of bringing it down. So that's my opinion.
Counselor Anthony.
I guess I would say the convenient MD building, to me, is a good example of how all it takes is a different code enforcement officer to put a pretty ugly building on High Street. So I'd be in favor of the amendment.
Is there any sort of rough estimate on the burden? Somebody mentioned, like, going from four months to eight months as a process in terms of time burden, but in terms of financially, how much it increases the cost to have to go before the planning board for a development there?
Right now, with the way, again, the market is, I think I mentioned, I don't have exact cost, but it's really expensive. Just get a surveyor to go out and survey a plot of land, to get a traffic engineer to do a traffic study. So it is burdensome.
And since Steve confused me, I forget to close the public hearing, which is good because somebody wants to.
Toby Stevenson, just as a resident, I want to put out that's been affected by developments near my own personal property, private property, that I appreciate the burden that some of these, this time can exact on small business people and large business people. But it's a one-time burden as opposed to a permanent burden, which is just something I'd like to put forward, that when we change the city and we allow developments to go through, that we may be, we may find quite unattractive, that's permanent. And I like this city a lot because it's an attractive city to me. It's got a lot going on, but I don't want it to become overdeveloped at the same time. I appreciate business, but I don't want it to be overdeveloped. And just consider the balance of a one-time expense versus a permanent effect on the community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to?
Dale, if I could just real quick, I just, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, I think the piece that's kind of missing here in this ordinance change is the confidence in our staff. And, you know, we have a very competent planner, assistant planner. We have fantastic code enforcement. Jana came up and spoke very eloquently about, you know, the work that she does in economic development. We have a full staff here in City Hall that meets and goes over planned projects in our technical team review process. So none of this happens in a silo. It doesn't happen in a vacuum. There's a lot of conversations about developments that come in to the city. And, you know, and I think that these decisions aren't going to be made by one person. They're going to be made by multiple people. And, you know, I've had many conversations with Lori. She calls and asks me frequently for my opinion on different situations when she has things that arise. So I think it's, you know, putting our confidence and our faith in our staff to do the right thing and to look out for the best interest of the city when these types of projects come forward if there's question. And I think the city has proved, our staff has proven that they've done that in the past, and there's no reason to doubt that they wouldn't continue to do that. So.
I'll formally close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Counselors? Any action?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the amendment to Article 6, Site Development Plan Review of Chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I would just say for myself that I have absolute trust in the city staff at this moment, but I think the decisions that we make about ordinances are for perpetuity. They're not for who we feel confident in and trust at this moment.
Yeah, speaks my mind. I mean, freedom within one's own land to develop as they see fit is great, but, you know, reason, within reason is objective. That's why we have codes and development is only going to get more complex into the future with neighborhoods existing, coexisting with small businesses, which, you know, things are tough for small businesses. But I would say that a 3,000 square foot project is a hugely expensive task in this economy. And I would say developers aren't necessarily that small if they're developing a project like that and would likely have resources to handle an additional $5,000 to $10,000 burden. And that we would, as a council, see complaints from neighbors eventually down the line for things that the planning board didn't codify as, you know, if there were going to be problems with the border of a business and a neighborhood, neighbors complaining, we would see that. And I would rather have the planning board take care of that, nip it in the bud before it becomes a problem later down the line for the council.
Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails. Counselors, we're going to be here for another four hours. Do you want to take a break?
Break.
All right, let's take a seven-minute break.
Yeah.
Well, after my next.
Jason.
There he goes.
Thank you.
All right, we are back in session. Item sixteen, request of the city planner for consent from the city council to move ahead with grant applications to lands for Maine's Future Fund and Land and Water Conservation Fund that will assist in the fee acquisition of a parcel of land abutting the Branch Lake Public Forest map seventy-four, lot two, for the purposes of expanding recreational opportunities and protection of the public drinking water source.
All right, thank you, guys. So, yeah, essentially, the city has been approached by Frenchman Bay Conservancy, who was approached by the landowner of the subject property about purchasing the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine acre lot for conservation purposes. The city had had previous talks with this landowner back in 2019 to do the same. For one reason or another, those talks didn't move forward. The goal with these grants is that there will be no burden on the taxpayer for the fee acquisition. For people who don't have maps, it's a lot that's in between two already conserved city-owned properties, one of which on the southern side is the Branch Lake Public Forest. And the goal is to purchase the land so in the future we can expand trails and recreational activities, including hunting and fishing, into both of the northern lots. Because right now, really, only the public forest is accessible. You can kind of get to the northern lot, but there's no trails or parking or anything up that way. So, yeah, so the purchase price of the land would be $185,000, which is significantly below the actual value. So, that's what we were writing the grants for, to cover the $85,000, and then some for, you know, appraisal costs and that sort of thing with the project. And then, from there, you know, if, for whatever reason, we didn't get one of the grants, we'd work with Frenchman Bay Conservancy to either do private fundraising or look at other grant opportunities. But, again, the goal is that no taxpayer dollars will be spent on the fee acquisition in order to provide them essentially, to provide citizens with more recreational opportunities within the city. And, I mean, and I was an avid outdoors person and hiker, it's a worthwhile, like, recreational opportunity. If you can expand these trails to be ten to fifteen miles long, I'm a lot more likely to use it than, while they're beautiful, there's only a two, about two-mile trail system currently in the public forest. But, you know, it's not much.
And it's in the watershed.
And it's in the watershed, so it protects the public drinking source and, you know, the whole northern basin of Branch Lake is pretty developed. But our, the southern basins largely conserved at the moment as well, but additional conservation of that land is important as, as where our draw for the water source is.
Counselor, questions? Counselor Hall.
You said the goal was to make sure the Ellsworth taxpayer doesn't contribute to this.
Yes.
You may have said it differently. Is there a chance that this could burden our taxpayer?
No. So, again, if, for whatever reason, one of these two grants doesn't come through, we would work with Frenchman Bay Conservancy to either have private donations to them, help cover the remainder of the cost, or work on different grant applications that would cover the remainder of the costs.
It would have to come back to the city.
It would have to come back to the city council.
If you were ever going to consider, if we couldn't get grant funding and they still wanted to move the project forward, the council would have to, it would have to come back to council, and the council would have to vote to spend any money.
Thank you.
I guess I'm a little surprised that we have to approve grant application process. We do?
Yeah, I mean, yes, in the sense that, I mean, there's going to be staff time involved in this, and I think the consensus is among Frenchman's Bay, if, if this board doesn't have interest in pursuing, in this town, the town pursuing and purchasing this property, then there's really no point in staff putting in the effort to, to apply for these grants and, and, but the council does have to vote to accept a grant. So, if we are awarded the grants, it'll come back to the council for approval to accept those.
I will say, the Frenchman Bay was approached first, and they brought, asked the city to be involved because we already have conservation easements on the two abutting lots, so it made sense to have all three lots under the same rules, essentially, so recreational users aren't being told two different things in two different places.
Get off your bike on that side.
Right. But, Erin, if you correct me if I'm wrong, I think Frenchman Bay may still consider conservation without the city's involvement, but just makes more sense for the city to be involved in this particular process because of where it is and the land that it abuts.
Yeah, I think, I think the land largely is, is not able to be developed much because if it's, it's in the watershed, there are so many rules, restrictions, we, the city has all those conserved lands around it, so it's, it, this is a great purpose for it. It expands it and protects the watershed, which is critical for, for now and the future.
And John Whedon and I were out there Thursday last week, and it's very wet. It's, I guess, there is a fifteen-acre wetland that runs through the middle of it, but that's just mapped by the state. If you just go out there, it's a lot of standing water, potential vernal pools, brooks, so...
How big is the plot?
It's two-hundred-and-seventy-nine acres. But it's entry growth, so it doesn't provide, it provides about $500 in tax revenue for the city.
Mm-hmm.
$500.
I think the sign that's there now that says Branch Lake Recreation or something, is that a City of Ellsworth sign?
So, there is the public forest, which I think is what you're thinking of. So, there is currently city-owned land where that sign is, and, well, actually, so where the sign is, is on one A, on Bangor Road, which we have a access road with a easement through the property that abuts Bangor Road to get to the public forest. So, when you get to the parking area off of that road, that's city property, but before that's just a public access road where you have an easement to get to the public land.
Would there be plans, improvements to that road, or, as you said, like additional trails, but just, I'm thinking about accessibility and also visibility, to say like, hey, look, we're Ellsworth, we have this beautiful land?
Sure. So, at first, access to the land would probably remain through that access road. We may expand the parking a little bit more. This would all occur after the fee acquisition. There'd be different processes for getting the money to do this sort of thing. But actually, if you look at the map that has the green outline parcels and the red outline parcels in your packet, the city owns a access easement along the southwestern border of the, the subject lot that allows us to get from the public forest lot to the northern lot already, so there's already a clear trail along that way. And so, again, if we did purchase that land, there is technically already an accessway between the two other city lots that connects them. And then, again, in the future, the Haynes Lot, which is the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine acre lot, there, with it, we would be purchasing a right-of-way off of Branch Pond Road, so there would be additional opportunities for access and parking on the northern portion of that lot.
Counselor Hall.
The map shows the city's north lot is two-hundred-and-eighty-five acres, and the Branch Lake Public Forest was two-hundred-and-thirty-seven acres.
Yes.
Is, is there any knowledge of what the city paid for either one of those lots?
So, I don't, I think the city's north lot wasn't purchased. I think it was awarded in a lawsuit from a subdivider, it was subdivided when they weren't supposed to. And then, the public forest lot was part of a much bigger purchase, so there's land on the other side of Branch Lake, on the other shore, that was purchased at the same time. So, I'm pretty sure that cost was pretty, pretty expensive. I mean, again, grants were used to fund a lot of that, but I don't know exactly how much of that outsized cost, the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven acres, actually was.
Thank you.
So, it was 1.5 million dollars, off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure that's what it was, a cost for the conservation.
For just that lot, or the whole?
I think it was the whole.
The whole purchase?
Purchase, yeah. So, we should be, either the debt's been paid, or it's pretty, pretty close to being paid off. Do you know, do you have the year that, I think it was a ten-year bond?
This was purchased in 2010, so...
So, yeah, it should be paid for in full, I know.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I, I don't think there's a motion for this. It was just...
Just a general, like, go for it.
Yeah, let's get your, yeah, get your feedback, always to move forward.
Right. And I, can I just add something as well, that that was paid through the water users, too. It was a water bond, not through the taxpayers, because it was protecting our watershed.
So, you don't want a motion?
Yeah.
No.
A grant from, what was the grant?
It was the land for Maine's Future.
Yes.
And the, for Ellislands, there was a tag team of grants that were applied for to
offset the cost, so I think the overall project would have been more than 1.5.
I think it was maybe...
I think it was three million.
Three million. Three, three, okay.
John, you have a comment? Did you, would you comment on any of...
John Linehan, one-fifty-seven Shore Road, Ellsworth. Just, just a real quick comment. My only concern really is about the finances. That's what I brought up earlier in my three minutes, or it only took a minute and a half, about the expenditure. Anytime, you know, I wouldn't be, I'm opposed to accumulating this purchase of land if we have to pay any city money for it, because there's a lot, you know, I've owned passive land before, it costs a lot of money to maintain them, to put the roads in, to keep them in good shape like that. So, it isn't just your initial, somebody gives you somethings, like a horse, they give you a horse, well, you got to feed it hay, and you got to do that. So, there's costs involved with owning a piece of property like that. You know, I, if the city could get it at no expense, and we don't have any future expense, like adding roads and a system in there like that, it would make sense to connect it. But I think it's an area where, again, I'm opposed to spending money right now on issues right there that we don't need. If we can get it with a partnership or with grants, and it doesn't cost the city anything, okay, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I just, again, I caution the city councils about getting into expenditures and expenses that we're not going to be able to afford, I don't think, in the near future. That's just my opinion from studying the economic situations that not just our cities in, but our state and our federal government's in right now. Thank you.
The item on the, Steve Shagian, the item on the agenda says, "Request of the city planner for consent from the city council," so wouldn't the motion be appropriate?
That's what I thought.
Yeah. The other question is, who owns the land presently?
H.C. Haynes, Jr.
Oh, really? Yeah, that's interesting. Anyway, I agree with John. I think that the city's already got a lot of burden for this type of land, and if there's going to be any additional expense, should really give it some, some thought before we move ahead with it.
So, why don't we do a motion just formally, and then we'll, we'll know where we stand on it?
Could I ask a question first?
Yeah.
I get super nervous about magic money. And it seems like there's some magic money here, and I, I call grants magic money. And so, tell me again why, I mean, thank you, I, tell me again why the Ellsworth has to be involved in this. I mean, I, I don't want to rain on the parade, but magic money makes me nervous.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. My name is Erin Witham, I'm the Land Protection Manager with Frenchman Bay Conservancy. And so, while Frenchman Bay was approached by H.C. Haynes about this property, considering the fact that there are two parcels that the city already owns that are adjacent, it seems like it's a good fit for the city to continue owning. So, thinking about the cost of, of Ellsworth going out, you know, what, what responsibility does the City of Ellsworth have to these two adjacent parcels? And then, if, say, if Frenchman Bay Conservancy was going to own the middle one, then there's a lot of duplication of efforts, that, you know, the city is already doing things to maintain their boundaries and think about that, and then FBC comes in and does just this, and then you do this, and then we do this, and so it's a sort of a patchwork. So, Frenchman Bay Conservancy is willing to, you know, potentially take on this parcel to help protect the drinking water space and, and create a section that, of connected conserved land. But we wanted to bring the opportunity to the city because of the ownership that's already existing there, and for the opportunity for, to connect those recreation opportunities among one ownership as opposed to divided among multiple owners.
What's the current zone on the land?
It's the drinking water district.
So, and I think, from Frenchman Bay's perspective, we're, you know, I can understand the perspective of it being kind of magic money, but we're just, we're help, happy to help the city with these grant applications. We have been helping to prepare them and, and move it forward, so feeling it like it's a partnership effort that we're both benefiting from and both working on together, putting effort in together.
I'd say both grants require a 50% match, but we can use each grant to match the other.
Yeah.
And in addition, the bargain sale that we'd be buying the land for can be used as match as well, so the, the reduced price counts towards our match requirement.
You mentioned reduced price. Where are we coming up with a reduced price?
So, the tax appraisal is where I'm kind of with the reduced price at this point, and the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine acre size on the market would go for more than $185,000 generally. But getting an appraisal is part of the grant process, so at this point, we don't have the appraisal completed just yet, but before we are awarded a grant, if possible, the appraisal has to be done.
So, I think, I guess I just want to stress that, one, I very much appreciate all grant opportunities. Grants exist from a lot of foundations, from contributions from individuals who have given to that. They sit in investment accounts, and they make decisions about where they want their money to go, and, and I think the City of Ellsworth absolutely appreciates every opportunity that we have to, to bring in those grant resources to help the city grow and develop, and, and if we didn't have those opportunities, we would really stifle ourselves. And if you want to talk about increasing taxes, boy, that's a good way to, to increase our taxes when you think about all the things we've done over many, many, many years with, with grants and, and access. So, I appreciate the fact that you come into the city, especially this parcel. Reality is, is that we, it sounds like we will be able to purchase this without a dime of taxpayer dollars. It's in an area that we need to continue to protect. It is the water for this whole community. We don't want that to be jeopardized. It sounds like it's on wetland. We're not compromising anything in this. We're not giving up land that somebody could develop. We're not putting anything at risk in terms of taxpayer dollars. We're moving in a direction, and in the future, if we want to create recreational trails and there's cost for that, it's probably grant opportunities for that, that we can do that. That would always come before the council anyway, so there are no costs. And for us to not act on something that is this, this doesn't have a cost for the city. In fact, if we don't act on it, I think it has a negative impact long-term, so this is definitely something that I fully support.
Plus, we have to come back to the council if the grants could be accepted and everything anyway, so it has to come back to council no matter what. So, if you apply and get the grants, it has to come back, it's really a purchase, right?
Hope it's helpful to be in the loop on the process as we move through this together.
Do you know, Matt, if they plan on extending the trails to go through all three parcels, or...
I mean, eventually, that's what I would like to see happen.
Is that mostly volunteer work, or...
To extend the trails?
Yeah.
I will, you would probably need to get grants to do that, but...
The prior, the prior parcels was volunteer work, I believe. There wasn't even...
I, or Conservation Corps.
Was it?
I think it was John.
Oh.
Our former...
All you?
Our former city assistant planner, rest his soul, and I...
Yes.
Have a lot of sweat disinvested in sweat that's...
Yes.
And we probably will be happy to do so in the future as well.
So...
All right, so we have a, a lot of items. We've discussed this, through its end.
So, can I move, can I move to approve the go-ahead with the grant applications?
I think there might be one more public comment, if you're open to it.
But, possibly?
Do we take one more?
I just appreciate what Frenchman Bay is saying right there. I don't see the value of the city owning that one, that other piece of property. I can see value, Frenchman Bay owned all three of the properties. Maybe we'd be better off to put it all together, let them manage it, have no expense for ourselves involved, no insurance, no maintenance, no new roads, no nothing. It costs money to have those properties, even if you get them for nothing. And I think the city's well-prepared already in the drinking water and everything that I heard here today, so I don't really see an advantage for the city to own it. I could see Frenchman Bay, us working out a deal and them having the other two. So, they, I see, I see it's nice to have it all under one ownership, but I would think it would make sense for the city to not get involved with, let Frenchman Bay have the whole thing. Just my thought. I mean, you got liability insurance, somebody gets hurt, so a lot of expenses, I hope, probably.
Counselor Hanson.
I wasn't going to say anything, other than I don't think they offered to buy that land for us.
I thought you were going to make, I thought you were going to make the motion.
Oh, I, yes. I did.
Well, she's going to make it. Oh, you did?
Yeah, she did make it.
Oh, sorry, I missed. And second, we have a motion second, any further discussion? That's good. Okay, no discussion, all in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Item seventeen, council order number zero-three-two-three-zero-five, request of the city planner and comprehensive plan steering committee to approve their recommendation of consulting services to complete the comprehensive plan update and allow the city managers to sign the agreement.
All right, last one from me, you know, probably getting tired of me.
You're monopolizing this.
Next time, you're last.
Sorry to my coworkers.
Don't mind her, you should don't.
So, as you know, we're going underway with our comprehensive plan process. We established our steering committee. The council's represented by Counselor Hanson and Counselor Stein, and the group has gone through the process of collecting proposals through the RFP process and vetting them. So, everyone on the steering committee reviewed the applications, scored them based on certain criteria that was in the RFP, and then myself, the chair and vice-chair of the steering committee interviewed all three applicants, and then reported back to the steering committee at a meeting of the results of those interviews, and compared on those results, the scores, and really just comparing the cost between two and the labor that we would get in return for, between the two. The steering committee voted to recommend Barry Dunn as the consultant to move forward with. Within your packet is the total cost, so we set aside the $100,000 budget for the comprehensive plan. Their cost is the $99,120 for over seven hundred, seven hundred hours' worth of labor to work on the plan. This price is $1,000 more than the second-place consultant, but it is 200 labor hours more, so you're getting a lot more bang for your buck with this consultant. And they've also partnered with Woodard and Kern as a subcontractor for technical assistance through the comprehensive plan on the chapters that concern our infrastructure, such as water, wastewater, things that Woodard and Kern already works on with the city and has deep knowledge of. So, they were recommended as the consultant.
Barry Dunn was the only consultant that had done...
Barry Dunn was the only consultant that had done previous comp plans in Maine, correct? Out of the two?
They did the most comp plans in Maine. If they're about to finish Bangor's, they're working on Fallmost, and they did visioning for Yarmouth. Second place, Weston Sampson, had previous comp plan experience in New England, but do believe only, they had not done one in Maine yet.
So before we start, I'm just going to flip it. I'm going to ask if anybody wants to speak on this, you get a chance to speak once, and then we're going to take it from there, just so that we can keep the agenda moving.
Thank you. John Linehan, 157 Shore Road. Matt, are you telling me that the expense for this consulting service is $100,000, $99,000?
So the full expense is $99,000. So it's not just the consulting, it's also the marketing that's involved, the additional materials that would be used in creative public engagement. So it's all encompassed, not to exceed the cost.
And that consulting is to give you, as a city planner and the comprehensive plan, advice or knowledge, or that's what the consulting is for?
It's not to give me, it's to provide the city with a plan to move forward and to make sure that there's enough bodies to do full inventory and analysis of existing, if there are existing assets within the city, and then also to collect public engagement, make sure that everyone's choices are heard.
Okay. I would be opposed to that because I think we've already got the people with the planner and with the officers we already have right now, that I have confidence in Matt, Jan, or other people that are involved with that. I don't see that we need to spend $99,000 more to reinforce what I think are quality people that already know what's going on right there. So that's just another area that I would think is another $100,000 roughly that we don't need to spend on that. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Counselors.
I would just speak quickly from being on the steering committee when the decision got made. It was pretty close to, I mean, it was unanimous by the time we voted, but it was interesting that we all really appreciated this company and the fact that they work with Woodard and Kern. And I guess I would just say to Mr. Linehan's point, we actually already made the decision about how much money we were going to spend on this. So this is not about do we spend this money or not, it's just which of the groups that we're picking. I thought this group looked great. We were able to go online and see the modalities that use for Bangor because they're doing Bangor's comprehensive plan. They were really easy to look at and find. Their final project was the kind of thing that I feel like you could bring here to city council or use as a citizen and really understand what our goals for the city will be. So I was really excited about it.
I'll briefly add to that. There was another respondent to the RFP that came at a much lower cost. The reason that the steering committee did not go with that, one of the reasons was that it put such a burden on city staff. So it was this one point person as a consultant driving action from the city staff that really would go above and beyond the capabilities, not that they couldn't do it, but they wouldn't have the time to do it. In addition, the one we're recommending has all sorts of experts from things like storm water remediation to walkability to, you know, public transport. So there are these very specialized niche professionals coming in to help steer the plan. It's also plans required by the state that we have updated, and the consultant knows which of the, which of the topics needs to be addressed to satisfy the state's needs that our city has. And lastly, huh, that was it.
Hi, well, that the third consultant technically turned in an incomplete applicant or proposal because during the interview process, so their proposal essentially just provided a price for themselves and not other subcontractors that they would use. But during the interview process that came forward, that they were likely to use subcontractors. And they did not provide cost analysis for them. And then the RFP requested that, so they turned in an incomplete application, which left a lot of questions for the steering committee.
Is there a motion?
authorize the city manager to approve a contract for services with Barry Dunn, Maniel and Parker LLC as a consultant to help complete and facilitate the City of Ellsworth comprehensive plan update. This agreement will be funded by the comprehensive plan reserve fund set aside during 2022 and FY 2023, and the approved allocated TIF funds from 2023, FY 2023, for a total not to exceed $100,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, Council Order Number 032306 requests the Public Works Director to extend, by Matt, to extend the contract for center and sideline striping and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Good evening, Lisa Secklich. I will make mine super quick, hopefully, next two items. First one, I don't even know honestly which one was first. I think it's the long lines. It's my yearly request to have pavement marking done. It's pretty simple. I'm requesting to use the same guy we used last year, and the same guy we used the year before, and the year before, and the last probably 15-ish years. So there's my spiel.
Is this within the budgeted amount?
Yes. So I budgeted $85,000 for between the two contracts, and we'll come at about 60, but we also are repainting them in the fall. We did that this past fall, and we'll probably do it again, just the main street crosswalk side.
How do you feel about that work this year?
Um.
Do you feel like you can see a difference?
Nothing is going to stay all season long, but I do believe we have some additional benefit in the fall and early winter with the fall painting.
Ready for a motion? Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to extend the agreement for arrows, lane designations, stop bars, and crosswalks. Oh, back.
Center, sideline striping.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to extend the agreement for center line and sideline striping to Lucas striping LLC at the unit prices per the attached proposal.
Second. Motion a second. Discussion. Counselor O'Hanlon.
Was this put out to bid?
It was three years ago. I'm asking to renew the contract. So it's a three-year. When we put it out to bid, we were allowed to have up to two additional year extensions. So next year, I will have to put it out to bid again.
He was the only bidder, wasn't he?
Uh, for the long lines, no, two years ago, no.
No more discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Council Order Number 032307 requests the Public Works Director to extend the contract from marking words, symbols, stop bars, parking lines, crosswalks, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
So this is for our crosswalks, arrows only as symbols. This is same scenario. We put it out to bid in 2021, so I'm asking to do the second one-year extension, and then it'll go back out to bid next spring.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to extend the agreement for arrows, lane designations, stop bars, and crosswalks, striping to Newman ground effects at the new 2023 unit prices per the attached proposal.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? I would just be curious if anybody's opposed to it, to explain why before we move to vote. Be nice to know the concerns. Seeing them. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Number twenty, Council Order Number 032308 requests the facilities manager to contract with Tepper Times LLC for city hall cleaning services and authorize the city managers to sign the agreement.
Good evening. I'm Jim McLean. I'm your facilities director. I guess I've done a good job the last six months of flying under the radar before you folks at all.
Well, that's why you're here tonight.
That's what I'm here for, yeah. So back, I believe it was in November we signed it, oh, you folks signed the contract or approved the contract with a previous cleaner. We basically had deployed, town city manager had deployed the contract. They showed up three times, I think, over the course of three months, four months, three months? They were just a no-show. So we put it back out to bid. We received one bid from Amanda Tepper. And I guess I'm asking, she has been cleaning per diem, off and on for the last couple of months, for us, to award the contract cleaning city hall. Basically the same as the previous contractor, three times a week. There's no change. The price was less than-
Maybe higher.
It was less than like 300, 400 bucks a year higher than the contractor that you all read on last time?
And it's still, like, just want to add, it's still significantly less than hiring a employee to clean.
So they're going to come three times a week?
Yes.
What, 12 times a month?
Yeah. She's been doing it right along, like I said, per diem for a while now. She does a great job, excellent job, can do a very good job.
Counselor O'Hanlon.
And to clarify, I like the sounds that it went out to bid. She was the only bidder?
She was.
Is that correct? And city hall always looks nice. She's currently doing it, correct?
Correct. She comes in Monday, Wednesday, and either Friday nights or one night over the weekend, depending on her availability.
Thank you for putting it out to bid.
Thank the clerk, she did it.
Ready for a motion? Move to contract with Tepper Times LLC for one year with the ability to cancel it as per contract with 30 days written notice. Contract fees will be drawn from account.
Second. Motion a second.
Voting.
Any discussion apparently not. All of, any discussion? All in favor? You're going to get me in trouble. Item twenty-one, Council Order Number 032309 requests the facilities manager to contract with Tepper Times LLC for janitorial services for city-owned restrooms at public facilities and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
This is the same thing, basically consolidating the cleaning contracts for the three different locations that the city maintains for public restrooms. Again, we put it out to bid. Tepper Times was the only bidder. I can't give you much of a cost comparison, but based on what we were paying in Nolton Park last year for the previous contractor and what she's going to charge, you're going to save about 60, rough number, $60 a week in cleaning. I didn't have any numbers for DeMires, and I didn't have any numbers for Harbor, so I couldn't compare those for you. But there is a savings with Nolton Park at least.
Move to contract with Tepper Times LLC for one year with the ability to cancel per contract with 30 days written notice. Contract fees will be drawn from the respective maintenance accounts.
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion. All those in favor? Get in. Item twenty-two, Council Order Number 03230, try that again, Council Order Number 032310, request of the facilities manager to contract with Natural Lawn of America for city property lawn treatment services.
Again, so I was asked to put up bid for the lawn treatment services for all the city properties. There's 10 locations. We got four bids back. The lowest bid was the one that I recommended with Natural Lawn of America. They were the contractor last year. Their bid was 23,440, and it ranged all the way to 54,000 for an apples-to-apples comparison. Each company, each company I contacted was given the same exact bid specs.
No complaints from last year's performances?
It wasn't here last year. My only, I guess my only question to you folks is, do you want to continue with these 10 locations with spray fertilization, aeration, grub control, pre-emergent weed control? That was my only question to you folks, is if you wanted to do, continue with all 10 locations, or if you wanted to condense some.
If we do that, we'll need to put it back out to bid, right? Is that what, because we put it out to bid?
Each bid was broken down by location.
Oh, each location.
So we could remove a location.
Well, is there any location that somebody would want to remove? Because don't they all have to be done anyway? No?
Your most expensive with new lawn, your most expensive location was Nolton Park. Nolton Park, and second was Wilson Soccer Field for the total year servicing. Third was DeMires, one of the DeMires Field softball field. There's three different DeMire Fields that are treated.
I personally feel that we need to continue the processes. I mean, we've experienced issues in the past, and this company actually uses like the least amount of pesticides. And we had made a change, I think, five years ago, and we went with Natural Lawn Care of Maine. And I believe that it's been a good quality product, and it didn't, we were concerned because it was going to have less pesticides and less herbicides, that we'd have issues with growth. The grass wasn't going to grow right, but I think it's proven that it's been really good. It's environmentally more friendly and for the people as well as the land itself. So I'm in favor of keeping it just the way it is.
Counselor O'Hanlon.
I realize that $23,000 is a lot to ask of the taxpayers, but rebuilding lawns is going to be a lot more expensive. And if you've got the Natural Lawn of America for 23,000, and they're doing a great job, and you put it out to bid, thank you. Looks like a lot of bid work.
Thank God it's you.
The clerk. But I'm in favor of keeping that, only because I realize 23 grand is a lot, but you could spend 23 grand rebuilding one of these properties' lawns.
So yes. My only suggestion, I guess, for lack of a better term, is like the triangle at DeMires Field, which is at the edge of Bob Road and Route One. It's not really a public space per se, as like as in a baseball field or something like that. It's just a lawn. That might be one area where you could save a little. I mean, that's a $1,900 a year fee. Merrill Park, I mean, it's not big money. It's 300 bucks, but there's no grass there.
There's some grass there, right?
There's some planters and I. I've opened it. Yeah. Those are like the little things that I just, come to mind, that's all.
Buy your push mower and you can go push it.
We already, we already mowed. Yeah, with a weed whacker. That was my only two recommendations, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Counselor Ma.
Are we ready for a motion? Or do you have more questions?
Just one. I understood from the YMCA's consulting with the rec department that one of the DeMire Fields needed extensive work as it is now. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to continue this care of that particular field. But I am not familiar personally enough with that field.
The city manager took me over there last fall. We got some prices from a couple of contractors to fill some divots in the field. $2,600, that back field. Also talking with Lisa, the highway public works director, about repairing the driveway and the great big gigantic pond and the washout in the edge of the hot top. And that would be basically just money spent out of the recreation community to buy materials. The city doesn't have inch minus gravel available. It would have to be bought. But it would be, the labor would be handled by city crews, as far as the driveway goes.
Does that affect this lawn care, though? Does it mean we should?
It would be something in addition to, you know, basically they're hauling in, I forget the amount, 20 yards a lawn, 10 yards a lawn. It would be hand-spread and reseeded, and it was a spring, this spring project. We've already contracted to get the repairs done to that field.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then the lawn care would cover that field after. Okay, go further. No other questions?
Move to contract Natural Lawn of America for a price of $23,440.15 is a low bidder, and the costs to come from locations respective budget lines.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Discussion. All those in favor?
Thank you. Until next time, maybe we can do another six months.
Budget's coming up, buddy.
Oh, damn. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
You really be mad at me.
Item twenty-three, council order number zero-three-two-three-one-one, request of the economic development director in Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional economic development consulting services to prepare the city's economic development business attraction plan, market analysis, and action plan matrix.
Hello, Jana Richards, Economic Development Director. Just a little bit of background information. In August of two thousand and twenty-two, this past summer, at the city council meeting, the council at that time unanimously approved moving forward with a request for proposals to update the city's business attraction and development plan. We took that to heart and went out in November with a request for proposals. Unfortunately, we did not receive any proposals during that timeframe. We did receive feedback from a few consultants in the area who said that our, basically, our not-to-exceed budget line did not meet the scope of work. So we went back into the RFP and we revised the scope of work to take out some of the more hot, more high analysis, if you will, that was listed in the scope of work. One was more of a deep dive into a market, housing market study. The other was looking at some fiscal impact analyses, so what that means is if there's a, if we are attracting businesses to town, what does that mean for the city and the fiscal impacts on the city and the resources that we have here? Not to say that both of those studies aren't things that we could pursue potentially in the future, but they really didn't drive the impact of the results of this analysis for business attraction. So we, we removed those, not entirely, there will still be some analysis of our, our housing market, and there will still be some analysis of what that business attraction and development would mean for the city in terms of what our fiscal responsibility would be. It just won't be that deep of a dive into those topic areas. And the other revision we made was that we did not put a not-to-exceed budget into the proposal. We allowed the proposer to provide us with a very detailed budget analysis. So with that revision, we went back out with an RFP in January, and we were pleased that we actually received five proposals from some great firms. We did have a selection committee that included myself, the city manager, two counselors, Councilor Hanson and Councilor Hamilton, as well as the entire executive committee of the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation, who I will say is a partner in this project. So we had a rubric that we utilized to be able to review all of the proposals that came in, and we ranked them. And there were two proposals that rose to the surface as being the top. So we actually did due diligence, and we contacted references for both of those firms, but then we set up a question-and-answer interview period with the top-ranked proposer. Felt very comfortable with them. We wanted to ensure that they had experience working with some of the stakeholder groups we know that they're going to work with here in the city of Ellsworth, including small businesses, entrepreneurs, large businesses, the council, the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation, et cetera. We felt very comfortable with them, and so they rose to the top. They were the highest ranked, but we just wanted to make sure that they would be able to prepare a, a good and usable, implementable plan for us in the city. So the, the firm that we are recommending is Consult Econ, Inc., and they are partnering with Harpswell Strategies. Harpswell Strategies is actually located in Brunswick, Maine, and they've done work in Maine. Consult Econ, Inc. was, has done a lot of work in Maine, and they've actually done a project here in Hancock County. They worked with the Wood Lawn Museum on a, a study that they did for their campus. So we liked that they had the ties here to Hancock County as well as to Maine. The budget they proposed was not to exceed eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty. We got, out of the five proposals, we had one that was just about sixty thousand, and the highest was a hundred and ten thousand, so they fell right in the middle. Working with the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation, we're proposing a sixty-forty split of, to, to be able to budget the plan. Sixty percent coming from the city and forty percent coming from the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation. So you can see in my memo, the proposed breakdown would be thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty coming from the FY two thousand and twenty-three economic development budget. The two line items that would be tapped into for that would be the professional services and economic development services line items. We are requesting fifty, fifteen thousand from unallocated TIF funds to be allocated toward this project, and then the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation approved expenditure of thirty thousand dollars to be put toward the project. So the request is to move forward with Consult Econ, Inc. and Harpswell Strategies to help prepare this plan for the city of Ellsworth.
Questions? Comments? Counselor Hall.
I just have this question. What happens if we didn't have this plan? What, what new, what is this plan gonna do? It sounds like we've got a lot of people coming in, and I, I support all the business that wants to come. I, I just don't want to advertise for businesses to come and then slam them in the toe with a sledgehammer in a, in another way. So that's my only concern, is what, what will this do when this is done, that's not being done right now?
So there will, so like, sort of what was alluded to previously in the agenda where we were talking about some of the recommendations that came out of the two thousand and eleven plan. So they will do an, an analysis of our ordinances and our policies, and the way really sit, the city interacts with businesses currently, and could recommend changes that we can do to be either more business-friendly or to facilitate development and investment within the city. So that's changed greatly since two thousand and eleven. We currently have TIF districts that are designated that really should be updated. There's, for, I'll give you an example. There's land over by the hospital that is currently designated as a TIF district, so does that current, still make sense in this economy and this market? Or should we be changing that? And we really want to be able to, I mean, TIF districts are one of our economic development tools that we are, that we have here in the city, so we want to capitalize that because the, the investment in those goes back a bit, can go back to the developer, doesn't have to, but it also goes back to the city to be able to utilize for other projects. The other important piece here is that we were designated as an opportunity zone, a federal opportunity zone. We have not taken advantage of that to its full capacity, and we are looking for recommendations on how we can take advantage of that for the city as well. See, the other thing that we could do is utilize this plan to help us plan capital expenditures in terms of infrastructure. So where should we prioritize growth of our water and wastewater system? Again, that's changed greatly since two thousand and eleven. Not only would we expand that system to be able to have someone come invest in our land, but then I'm sure the wastewater and the water department would be very excited about getting new tax ratepayers into their system. So those are, I mean, and then the economy has obviously changed, so in two thousand and eleven, we, they were dictating that we look at call centers. People aren't really going into call centers anymore because of COVID. People are working from home. So we have a lot of land, particularly still within our commercial corridor, that we can seriously go out and advertise and have a plan and data to support it to these business owners and, and these companies. And I think I brought up during the finance committee when I was talking about this, is, you know, WS Development still has that land on Myrick Street, and at the time, there was a lot of talk about bringing in retail development, and they've been very hesitant. So if we have an updated plan that we're able to show them what sectors make sense for the city of Ellsworth, perhaps that would be a better argument at this time to be able to move forward with them.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo sort of what I was saying earlier. I think this plan, the public-private partnership, I think is exactly what we want. We have businesses who are supporting this. And as a city, this is the best way that we can be business-friendly, is to update this, is to go out and identify what do we need to do better? What do we need to do different? What are the sectors that we can draw in? If we are stagnant and we don't do anything as a city and plan for, for development around businesses, we, crossing our fingers and hoping isn't going to, to make it happen. There are lots of businesses that would love to be in a community like ours. We just need to make sure that we're being competitive around that, and, and this plan's going to help that to be possible. This is a great community, great place for businesses to be, and we need to let them know that. And, and I think this, this investment will pay large dividends when we think about tax base and everything. Lowering, if, we're gonna lower people's taxes, we're gonna do it by having growth, and we're gonna do it by having smart growth, and, and this is a step in that direction. When you don't spend anything, that's what you get in return.
I would just add too, because Ellsworth Business Development Corporation representatives aren't here right now, but I know what they would say to me is that, you know, we have their support, and they are the ones that want to go out into the business community. A lot of them are in the, uh, financial businesses, and they have connections either within the state or out of the state. They just need a little bit of direction and some support through a plan, and so I think we're providing them with a tool to be able to go out and, and do some of the work for us as well, which is, you know, wonderful for us.
We
Go.
You ready?
We ready for?
Yes, we are.
All right. Move to authorize city manager enter into agreement with Consult Econ, Inc. and Harpswell Strategies for professional consulting service to prepare the city's economic development business attraction plan, market analysis, and action plan matrix to be funded by thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars from FY two thousand and twenty-three economic development budget, a fifteen thousand dollar allocation from the FY twenty-three unallocated TIF funds, and with a thirty thousand dollar contribution from the Ellsworth Business, Business Development Corporation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All those in favor? Get in this.
Have a good night.
Item twenty-four, council order number zero-three-two-three-one-two, request of the deputy fire chief to purchase a used two thousand and twenty Ford F-four-fifty four-wheel-drive Bron ambulance from Ambulance Network Incorporated to purchase a stretcher and track system for the ambulance.
Good evening, councilors. Doug Bell taking the fire chief powers. Everybody do it.
Just get on with it, Doug.
Yeah, we're done chit-chatting.
All right, so, so we're here to discuss the potential purchase of a two thousand and twenty Ford F-four-fifty ambulance. The sale price being two hundred and five thousand. I'm, we're asking to spend a total of, be two hundred and three thousand, eight hundred. The proceeds would be from one hundred and fifty-five thousand from, uh, van proceeds and another forty-eight thousand, eight hundred from ARPA. This is minus a twenty thousand refundable deposit that has been put on the truck. The, the vehicle itself is of great condition. We went down, myself and one of firefighters. We put eyes on it at Councilor Halloran's suggestion. We took it to a third-party company for inspection. We took it to Jersey City Ford. They did diagnostic on it. It's in your package, the breakdown of the shop superintendent of what they found. No discrepancies were found on it. Overall, low mileage, still has existing manufacturer warranty. Has thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighteen miles on the unit. There are some, there's a little bit of change in the total asking amount from when I briefed y'all at the finance committee because like the day after we submitted the package, the ambulance network dealer offered us a chance to get a stair chair for the amount of two thousand dollars, which is roughly a little less than half price compared to buying one brand spanking new. And so that is why we put that in there. So overall, we're looking to spend an additional two hundred and three thousand, eight hundred dollars. This would include the, a power, a power stretcher, the performance load system, which allows you to secure the stretcher into the ambulance, as well as graphics that would come already lettered. Your package, I believe, has some examples rendering of what it would look like, and then also it would include the stair chair. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it.
So if I, if I could, Doug, real quick, I just want to, because several of the councilors weren't at the finance committee meeting when sort of the justification was brought up, so we're talking about a purchase without maybe the, the knowledge of why we need this purchase. So I'll, I'll give some kind of a brief highlight, and then you can probably fill in some details. But so, three years ago, the Ellsworth Fire Department, maybe a little longer now, expanded into EMS service. We currently run as a first responder. I know that's not the correct term for it, but for those of us who have been doing it forever, that's the technical term, first responder. So our fire department goes out on every nine-one-one medical call for the city of Ellsworth. We're currently doing it in either a rescue truck or an engine, which is a large piece of equipment. For a whole host of reasons, it's not really ideal, and we, our EMS portion of our fire department has become extremely busy. They're running on thirteen hundred, they're up over fifty, around, probably be around fifteen hundred, if not more, this year for EMS calls. So they're becoming more and more busy doing EMS. We're running into an issue with our reliability and the service that's being provided to our citizens from Northern Light, who we currently contract with, Northern Light Ambulance Service. Our fire, firefighters are finding extensive, being forced to wait for long extended periods of time on calls because we don't have the capacity to transport anyone. We just have to wait for an ambulance to come, and in many instances, Northern Light is coming with an ambulance, but no driver. So our, one of our firefighters is forced to drive the ambulance to the hospital. Fire truck has to follow him to the hospital to bring him back. So our personnel's being taken out of service for long periods of time on many calls while we're waiting for ambulance service. If we had the capacity to transport, it's gonna, it's gonna alleviate some of that burden on our staff because we can put the person in the ambulance, take them to the hospital, be back in service for another call in a much greater, greater reduction in time than what they're currently facing. In addition, we've also been contacted by one of the mutual aid providers in the area who isn't really happy about the number of calls that they're having to come to Ellsworth to provide mutual aid service to Northern Light. Not really our problem, but it is our problem because if they say we're not coming, then, you know, we have a, a serious issue for our citizens. So there are other reasons, and, and they can certainly give you more detail from their perspective. But from a city's, from a city manager perspective, I view this as the next step for us to take in providing EMS service, particularly nine-one-one emergency service to our citizens. Our citizens are not getting the quality of care that we, that we believe that they deserve and that we want to provide as a city and as a, as a fires, a fire department, and so this purchase will enable us to make sure that we're able to provide that level of care.
More to Ms. Rogers' point about, it would, it would alleviate burdens within the staff, but more important, it would be a benefit to the citizens of Ellsworth. Imagine, if you will, you call an ambulance because a loved one is hurt, sick, whatever. You have to wait thirty-five minutes for an ambulance to get there because there's not one available. If we have the ability, we're not talking about going into primary transport right now. We're talking about as a, a stop, uh, stopgap measure, baby steps, if you will, to get to where we want to be down the road. But if I have the capability and the personnel here that could load your loved one up, transport them to the hospital, and then be back in service ready for the next one before the other ambulance could even get there, it's a benefit to the citizens of Ellsworth. And for that reason, we're asking, we have two, uh, two things on the council proposal tonight, but main one is we've got to have the apparatus to be able to do it. That is the truck, the stretcher, stair chair, and that whole package there.
In addition, also, just to bring up the fact that currently, we're going on these calls, and we have zero potential for any reimbursement. If, once we become licensed, so they If, once we become licensed so that we can transport in these calls where our personnel's on scene and we have to transport because Northern Light's not available or there's an extended wait, we can then begin the billing cycle for those transports. So we can start actually recovering some of the, uh, you know, some of the loss, if you will, uh, expenses that go along with the EMS service that even, that we're currently providing. Right now, we have no potential to do that. So it's another benefit to expanding into a secondary transport type of capacity for us.
So how would that work if, um, Northern Light should call Northern Light? You go anyway. You call Northern Light, if they say, "We're half an hour out, can we take them?"
Yes, sir. But at the same time, as if, you know, we get the call, they can show up like normal.
If it's a dire emergency, then you're gonna take them anyway and, right?
We're incurring the costs now. We're, we're incurring the, the costs now. We have to send.
Absolutely. We are incurring the costs and there's no, we're, we're recouping no financial from it whatsoever. So not, pardon me. So not including the cost of fuel that we're using for a fire engine right now and the man-hours that we're utilizing. The equipment that we're using on scene that is not replaceable, we're having to incur that cost to replace that equipment at the same time. And I think where Mr. Moser was going is being able to recoup some of that cost and be able to replace that equipment is, is a big benefit to us on that side of things also.
And just remind that the ban was approved for this, this was one of the, the purposes that, that was included in that, that ban when it was authorized.
Yes, sir.
So that, that was thought about in terms of at that time that that was authorized. And, and the other, I mean, I think as, what we have as a choice, we have three choices. One, keep everything the same and have poor service for our citizens with, while they're sitting there sending, um, uh, all the costs of going there. We could give up all of our licenses in terms of the basic EMT and whatever those levels are and say, "We're not going to respond to calls anymore," which means that we're going to have our citizens sitting there waiting without any support, um, for thirty, forty-plus minutes, not getting any care. We could do that. Um, or we could go in this direction and provide a better response, better care, and get reimbursed for, for that service. And I, and I think that's what we have to consider in, in all of this is we, we have a large, our population is not small. Um, and our geography is large and the service is not a great service. And that's for a lot of reasons. It's just, it's the reality. We have an opportunity to change that and I think we should do that. This is, this is not a, um, situation where we should, um, ignore because the, the outcome is not going to be good for, for our citizens.
I have just a couple of questions. Can you just explain what the ban proceeds are? What that means?
The bond, borrowed money.
Okay. That we've already?
That, yeah, last year it was allocated a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Out of that ban was allocated for the purchase of a used ambulance.
Yeah, so that decision already got made.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't have to purchase it, but yeah, but that money was, so when you go, when you, when you get a bond, you can probably speak better to this than I can, but when you borrow that type of money, you need to identify certain projects. So you can't, it's not like you just go to the bank and borrow a hundred thousand dollars because you, and you just do whatever you want to it. It has to be identified. So as part of that ban, which was a bond anticipation note, as part of that ban, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was allocated specifically for the purchase of an ambulance. So that's where this, that's where the bulk of this money would come from, was that, is the ban proceeds.
And then my other question is, um, you said that once we get our ambulance, then we have to go through a licensing thing so that we can then, um, charge Medicare whomever for the transport?
Right, so right, right now, we are currently licensed at a BLS for basic life support, EMT basic, non-transport license. We would have to apply for it, and I will get into that in my, in the next section also. But we'll, we'll have to change our licensing to a, uh, EMT basic BLS transport service. So that is a change at the state level. Again, it's more, uh, more or less it's paperwork and approval from committees at the state level to get it processed through, but.
So that will just take some couple of months or something like that?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And then, this might have been Gene's question, and I just didn't understand. Um, if you do a first responder call and there you are and the patient needs to go to the hospital, do you have to ask Northern Light first if you can take them? Or you just take them because you're the one who's there?
So the way it basically works is where, this is our intention and our, way we foresee it happening. We currently have a contract that is still valid for at least another year. If they're there, like the same time or before us, they would transport that patient, just like any other time. But for all the other times where we're on a scene and we're having to wait for an ambulance to come out of Bucksport or off the, off the peninsula or out of Bangor, that is where we would step in and say, that's where we would transport so that you're not waiting for X amount of minutes on scene. You know, you have, we have the ability to go ahead and get that person to the hospital because no matter what our skill level, the ultimate definitive care is at the hospital. And so, you know, this, we're, we're just trying to provide that stopgap to the citizens to provide that, you know, nobody likes waiting and, and feeling that helpless feeling. I've been there myself and.
See how you're feeling.
No. So that's what we're trying to do.
And what I remember from conversations about this last year is in some ways we've been sort of stuck, like we have to pay Northern Light because we need someone to take the patients and we have to pay them what they want because we don't have that opportunity. But it sounds like, does purchasing this ambulance, that's a step in being kind of completely independent? It's not like the be-all and the end-all of being independent from having to pay for an outside?
No, ma'am, not, not at this point. Like I said, again, this is kind of a stepping stone, a baby step to, you know, our ultimate goal is to do that, to where we can provide our own personnel. But being in the medical field yourself, you know that medicine's expensive, the equipment's expensive. We're not there yet, we're not ready to take that big leap.
Yeah.
I think we are ready to take that baby step and move into it. And let maybe, as, as we start getting the opportunity to bill the insurance and get that money back, which then lead us to, you know, being able to buy newer equipment and hire more people to get to where we need to be. But it, you know, it's, it's a not, it's not gonna be any time like a one-year, two-year kind of thing, I don't think.
We still have a contract with Northern Lights anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
Another two and a half years, or two years and a few months, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this whole project has made sense to me. I understand why it makes sense for Ellsworth to move forward, um, in all of this. I, I wonder why are we having the discussion now and not within budgets? Like, why is this not a part of the budget season decision-making?
Well, the purchase of this particular vehicle was, I mean, we're still three months away from final budget season. So, um, we, uh, they found this particular vehicle, uh, it's very low mileage for the year. Um, it, uh, they can, they've seen the vehicle and been there. So, um, so the opportunity to buy this vehicle presented itself, um, you know, now as opposed to three months from now. Um, and, you know, I think with the funds that were allocated in the ban, paying for the bulk of it, um, and the previous council, um, which I believe you were, well, I know you were a part of this conversation, had identified, um, that ARPA funding, that EMS was a priority for the ARPA funding. Um, so we felt it was, it was important to move on this now and to, to purchase this particular vehicle because again, it is, uh, somewhat unique opportunity. Uh, they looked at multiple other vehicles and other dealers and didn't find anything that was anywhere near the quality of this vehicle for the price. Um, so I think for, for those reasons, um, it's really not, it wasn't something we were planning to budget for, the purchase, because of the previous conversations we had had about, um, it being an ARPA, the council having a desire to use ARPA funds for the expansion of EMS. So it really wasn't something that we were budgeting for. Now, we have, there will be some increases in their budget accordingly to support the, you know, this level of EMS going forward. Uh, but as far as the purchase of the ambulance or the equipment that's needed to outfit the ambulance, that wasn't something we were budgeting.
So this is something we have been talking about for quite some time, as you remember. But to give you an example of the, um, we, the uniqueness of this vehicle, Autotronics offered us a new two thousand twenty-three Ram fifty-five hundred, six-point-seven-liter turbo, uh, turbo diesel four-wheel-drive, same exact body that is on the ambulance we wish to purchase at a price of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and delivery time of twenty-four to twenty-eight months. They had a used unit, which was a two thousand twelve Ram forty-five hundred PL custom that had seventy-eight thousand miles on it, and they wanted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus the power stretcher and the load system. Uh, and then we reached out to Brently Mountain Fire Apparatus where we bought our rescue truck from. Their closest thing they had was a two thousand and fifteen Ford E four fifty V-ten gas engine, a hundred and three thousand miles, almost sixty-one hundred engine hours at ninety-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Even nowadays with the used stuff, isn't cheap. So, I mean, this is a really good opportunity, I think, for the year of the vehicle, the mileage, and everything else.
Yeah, so part of it was this is the direction you've been trying to move and part of it is like this thing came in front of you and it seems like a good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
It didn't fit in their garage or something? There was a?
This, so, this particular apparatus came from a, a fire department in Ohio. And, um, in the EMS world, it's not uncommon to do what they call a remount, where the box has a lot longer life than, say, the chassis and drivetrain. They will take that box off, the older one, and put a new one on. Braun is an ambulance manufacturer. They, after our finance meeting, uh, where we're brief finance committee here, we went back and we contacted Braun, gave them the VIN number of the, of the ambulance, and they pulled it up and they gave us a plethora of information. Uh, turns out the guy I was speaking to on the phone was the one that actually wired the thing. He gave us the build sheet that shows everything they did to it. Uh, it's a two thousand seven box, it has a lifetime warranty on the structure. Everything has been converted to LED and upgraded. And, uh, I couldn't have, I mean, to get the type of information we got from them is unreal. Wiring diagrams, the whole line yards. So, um, again, verified by, by, uh, Jersey City Ford. Fantastic truck, in my opinion. Yes, sir.
I'm all for Ellsworth entering the ambulance arena. And if I understand this correctly, you already are paying the personnel to go right now.
Yes, sir.
Correct. How did we get into that? Was that through the licensing or was that through the contract with Northern Light? How did we get into sending a rescue truck?
Honestly, sir, when I was hired, uh, eighteen months ago, we were already doing that. So that was before my time.
Okay.
I can answer.
I can give you a little bit of background.
We, we made that decision to the, the, we had the situation where citizens were calling and there was no training. Um, our personnel were showing up untrained. Um, and so that was kind of the basic level to, to say, "Let's at least be able to, to give some care to people who are waiting." That's how, that's how it's, in essence, that's how it started. And then it was authorized to, to go through that basic level of training.
Gotcha. And so, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for delivering, um, a notch level to, uh, up from the citizens, I, to the citizens. And if you already have the personnel, it's just a different truck that we're talking about and different equipment. Um, and I realize that's the beginning step. When you saw this truck, what, one thing that haunts me is the oh-seven body on the twenty-twenty truck. But you've been to see this truck.
Yes, sir.
Would you have known that if you didn't have that data?
Absolutely not.
You would not?
No, sir. I would not have known that it was a oh-seven body. And it's not uncommon in the emergency medical service world for the box to be in service anywhere from five to fifteen years before it is remounted on a new chassis. And you actually save money that way because, you know, five hundred thousand dollars almost for a brand-new ambulance versus a new chassis and the labor to put the new box on. So it's a cost, there's a cost-saving measure in there as well. And that is one of the main reasons they do that is like, for example, like Braun, they offer a lifetime warranty on the structure and which will be transferable to us. So, I mean, you look at the, if there's usually an issue, it's the structure itself. You know, uh, and with that lifetime warranty, several, uh, ambulance makers have that type of, you know, condition out there. And so it's not uncommon to do that. Usually a max of about two, two remounts is usually the max of a use serviceable box on ambulance.
So one of the things about, um, the internet is really nice is that I get texts with information. So, um, whether or not, if the decision around this, one thing that I would ask you to do if this gets approved is to still maybe do some due diligence around this information. I have no idea. Uh, but just looking at it, it's aero ambulances. Um, and they, in terms of brand-new, that, uh, brand-new ambulance is much less than what you would think. So, you know, we just ask that you do some due diligence around that. And if you find that this is actually, even if this passes, just to look into it to see if the, if it has any potential and if it does, to maybe rethink whatever the outcome is here tonight. Again, don't know anything about it, but when you see it.
The name, the name sounds familiar. Uh, we looked at multiple different places while, you know, when we found this one. Uh, like I said, the name's found familiar, but I will look into it.
Yeah, I'll send you the, the details, so you can.
Well, it sounds like we'll need more of these in the future as well.
Absolutely. Uh, to, to go in the direction that the previous council had suggested and to be a primary provider, we will definitely need more.
Council, how?
I reached out to John Partridge Senior, who ran county ambulance for a hundred years. Lack of a better term. And, and he told me that Braun was a very good product. And that if Braun mounted this box, that that had a lot more weight on it than if some backyard guy mounted a Braun body.
Yes, sir.
Um, nothing against anybody, but that is what he told me.
And like I said, it was confirmed with Braun that this was shipped back to the factory and was, uh, remounted and refurbished by the factory.
According to him, that buys value.
I would not disagree with that at all. Uh, and, you know, Braun has a good name within the EMS industry.
Okay, is, are we ready? Is everyone good? Any other questions?
Any public comment?
Public comment? That's up to you.
I guess I got, I was a little surprised at, uh, Steve Shea again. And this is a complex question. I was a little surprised to see it presented on the agenda. And I, I didn't know anything about it till I read the agenda this, this morning. That, and several councils have admitted that this is the first time they've heard this proposal. Is that right?
We've, this issue isn't new.
The issue is not new, but this proposal.
Right.
It's new to some of the councilors.
Right, and that's usually how most issues come forward. If the council wants to.
But this is a, this is more complex than the average issue. And I've got a lot of questions. I'm not necessarily opposed to it or against it, but I think there's a lot of questions. And I think there's a lot more that needs to be discussed in a public arena.
Oh, no, and, and I'm not disputing that, that point that you're making. What I'm saying is that most issues that get on the agenda come forward, the council can say, "Well, we need more information." That, so this is the first attempt to say, "Here's the issue." And whatever the council does is up to the council.
That would be my reason for the council, at least the table verse, until they've had a, a chance to look at it a little further because like somebody's just sent you as another company, for instance. My question, and I don't wanna stay here all night and ask questions, but these ambulances that Northern Light are sending to pick up people now, they cost a half a million dollars? Is that, is that right?
The only price, the only price right now for a brand-new ambulance is between four fifty and five hundred thousand dollars unequipped. That is off the line, off the factory line. It's running between four and five hundred thousand dollars just to get that in.
That's.
With a two-to-three-year wait.
That's the, that's the units that Northern Light's currently using?
I have, I don't, I'm not part of their purchasing program, so I can't. I have, I don't, I'm not part of their purchasing program, so I can't testify to that.
Well, that's, I think that's, that's what I'm saying. I think we need more information. It's a lot of money, it's a complex issue, and I, I would recommend that the council table this for further consideration.
Thank you.
I would say I'm new to the discussion, to the council, so I wasn't here for previous discussions. I did listen to the recording of the finance committee meeting, and I felt very well up to speed in the information that this gentleman provided as I'm listening to that, so I feel very caught off myself.
So, that's what I was going to state as well. So, the fire department brought it to the finance committee for recommendations and feedback from the counselors that were there. We send out a recording of the meeting to the rest of the council, and they can listen to that. So, it's not, if they haven't had the opportunity to listen to it, then I don't know what to.
The finance committee, when the finance committee review it.
Two, three weeks ago, I think, three weeks ago.
It's about three weeks ago.
I think so, three weeks, yeah.
It was prior to you going down and seeing it.
Yes, sir.
It might have been a month already.
Yeah, because we went down March third, so I know it was prior, it was prior to that.
It was in the February meeting, yeah.
Well, the, the deposit was twelve, two-twenty-four, and the deposit hadn't been made yet. When you come to the finance?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, it's been a month, yeah.
So, that was, you must have come just before then, because it was, you had mentioned at the finance meeting that it was a refundable deposit of twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
So, the other thing I'd just like to throw out, that it, in, it was discussed during ARPA funds, that it might be a good use of the funds to initiate the ambulance service in Ellsworth. And I think at that time, there was talk about other towns of this size run their own rescue, maybe I'm using the wrong term. Ambulance service, rescue service, what have you. There's no doubt in my mind that private industry can do it better, but it seems that... I, I struggle with this truck, I'll be the first to tell you, an oh-seven body with a newer truck. But it would seem that, that the Ellsworth citizens do deserve something of this nature for protection.
Okay, I'm going to throw this out here. Move to approve the request to purchase the two-thousand-and-twenty Ford F-four-fifty four-by-four Braun Chief XL ambulance from Ambulance Network to include the striker stretcher package and graphics letter package. The total of two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars would comprise of a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars from BAN proceeds and the remaining forty-six thousand eight hundred from ARPA funding, minus the refundable deposit of twenty thousand, for a total of two thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-one thousand eight hundred.
Can you include another two thousand, not for the chair?
Plus two thousand dollars, yes. Yes, got it, sure.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes.
Item twenty-five, council order number zero-three-two-three-one-three, request of the deputy fire chief to purchase all ambulance equipment in accordance with main laws and rules to operate as a licensed transport agency.
Because if we're going to buy the ambulance, we should get the stuff that goes inside it.
Yes, ma'am, that is it in the shell.
And I believe there's a volunteer physician seat.
So, I can, I will make this as brief as possible, I know it's a long night so far. So, in your package, I listed two options. You have the option one, which is, would give us the ability to transport a patient by ambulance at the basic level, EMT level, which is the same level we are right now, without the transport capability. We would be required to provide this level of care at all times, and the equipment needed to stock the ambulance with the required equipment from state, main state EMS would be about fifty-nine thousand and sixteen dollars, I believe, for that level. However, city of Ellsworth, fire department does have the adequate personnel for us to permit up to the advanced EMT level. This would give us the ability to provide a higher level of emergency medical care to the citizens of Ellsworth when we have the people on duty. Permitting of the advanced level does require the purchase of additional equipment above and beyond option one in your package. I think if you have a color copy, it's the items that are highlighted in gold. The cost difference is roughly seventy-four hundred dollars for a total of about sixty-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine. We are asking that, I think in the best interest of what is for the citizens of Ellsworth, to purchase the equipment for the advanced level for us to permit at the advanced level. And then this, all the funding request, which also includes approximately five thousand for radios that have to be installed into the ambulance to communicate with both dispatch as well as the hospital. So, we're asking, again, to make the purchase out of ARPA funds, not to exceed seventy thousand due to the potential for a cost increase. And the reason I ask that because this list that you have in your package, I created roughly three months ago in anticipation that we were going to be there one day. One, one particular item on that list three months ago was six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This past week, when I put this list together, it was a thousand dollars, significant jump. And, you know, they literally, from week to week, have price increases. So, that's why we're asking for the amount of not to exceed seventy, to include the radio and the equipment. Again, I think permitting to the advanced level would, is going to be the best service available right now for the citizens of Ellsworth. And if anybody has questions about the permitting versus licensing, I will do my best to explain it to you.
So, a, a couple of questions that I have. One is, I just heard you say that, that we have some personnel but not full, so that we could operate it partly?
So, we currently have four vans personnel, one paramedic on the ship. Each one, there's one on every shift. So, that would give us the ability to work every day, with the exception of, like, if somebody was off on vacation or something. And that's the difference between, we would still be licensed at the EMT basic transport level. But with the permitting up, that gives us the ability, as long as we have the personnel on duty, we can function at the EMT advanced level. The difference is the ability to start IVs, advanced airway, and the addition of some medications. So, again, it's a, it's a higher level of care than where we are at currently right now.
So, my, my other question and thought around it is, given this, the issue that we have with surrounding communities about responding to calls, as we become more higher level, are we then obligated to respond to other communities? And all of that is to say that personally, to, to go up the level, I think it's great to where we're starting and being able to be responsive, but I, I really think that it would be helpful to have a, a more complete plan of what it looks like to go to that next level. What do we really need to have for personnel to operate the way we would want? Do we have to respond to other communities? So, I'm more inclined to stay at that basic transport level until there's a, a complete plan that can be reviewed, shared, and we understand the totality of the implications. So, that, that's what, how I'm feeling about it.
So, you've spoken with enlisted state, and if I'm not mistaken there, you know, we would be able to identify in mutual aid agreements, you know, what our response territorial definitions would be. So, during the application process, we would identify the city of Ellsworth as our primary response area. But because there is no language in the state of Maine for a backup service with a primary provider, main EMS board will have to, have to review our application to allow us to be, there are other cities that have done that throughout the state, but they have to specifically put language into a response agreement with the primary provider as to how that works. As far as mutual aid obligations, again, the mutual aid obligation would be on the primary provider for the city, which is what we pay for already. As far as extending us outside the city limits, that's something we're going to have to look at the state and see where our mutual aid obligation goes where we're, where we're a secondary provider as opposed to a primary provider. And even if we were a primary provider, we'd still be stuck in that same scenario. We'd be obligated, if we were a primary provider, to provide mutual aid to surrounding communities, whereas that language may change on the secondary provider level.
That's, that's kind of why I think having a plan first before we jump there is, is helpful. Council lights and then council help.
I forgot what I was going to say.
It's late.
It is late.
Can I add one thing to that, though? Even from, say, a first response standpoint, and I, I don't want to take away from this topic, but from a first response standpoint, if we are waiting on scene, or we, let's say we're out in North Ellsworth and Northern Light is still coming to us, by being at that advanced level, we could stop providing care at a higher level while we're waiting for Northern Light to get there. And I think that's also something to note. I know we're looking at the transport side of things, but when we're asking for equipment and the permission to be able to move up to that level, I think that's another part of the component that we're looking at, is to be able to provide medications and some advanced level stuff, not paramedic level, but intermediate-level ALS skills. On the first response side of things, it still benefits the citizens of Ellsworth.
Well, and it's horrible to sit there not being able to do what you actually need to do to take care of someone because you don't have the equipment.
Yes, ma'am. Either A, don't have the equipment, or B, don't have the permissions on the license to do so.
Yeah.
If you was to buy option two, the more advanced equipment, is there anything that says that you can't operate at option one level in the beginning?
So, I don't want to rush that in.
I, I just want to.
No, there isn't.
Right, there isn't.
Just because you have the equipment doesn't mean you have to use it.
The basic EMT licensure is what we guarantee to the city of Ellsworth. The advanced level permission is just exactly that. If I have an advanced EMT on scene, then he can operate at that level, but we don't have to maintain it all the time. We have to maintain basic EMTs.
So, it's seven grand difference?
Yes, sir.
And, and it, short of a better word here, is, is this something that when, and I don't mean to get into the legal part, but you've got someone that needs your help, is, is this something that those rules go aside and you just help? Or is this, you have to stand there?
Not without losing your professional license.
Okay, you've got to stand there and let the guy.
Exactly. We, we operate underneath a physician's license.
Okay, okay.
You can't go willy-nilly on that.
But buying, buying the, the seven thousand dollars more, the sixty-six thousand dollar option, is just equipping the ambulance, it's not requiring the licensing, correct?
Right, exactly. Just equip the ambulance for that, and then the licensing process and the permission process would give us the ability to use that equipment out on the scene.
So, so I think to Dale's point, we can, you can make the purchase to the higher level. When they do more research and are more prepared with a plan to come back for the licensing, then that's when we address this, this council's concern with where they license to as opposed to where they permit to. Equipment allows us, we're, we're going to license to basic transport, because that's why we're buying the ambulance, so we can transport. Beyond that is additional conversations can be had. Tonight's conversation is, we purchase the equipment, and then we have those conversations. And if, ultimately, if the council decides that they want to allow the, the department to permit up to advanced, then we already have the equipment to do that. If we don't, if we do, if we don't purchase the equipment now, then we have to go back and purchase another eight, you know, seven, eight thousand dollars, and if the prices keep going up, maybe ten thousand dollars worth of equipment in order to be able to permit up to that level.
Got it. It's late.
Keeping it all straight, man.
I'd like to make a motion.
Why are you texting?
I want to license the EMT basic transport level and permit up to the EMT advanced level at a cost of sixty-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine and six cents to fully furnish and stock an ambulance in accordance with the main state EMS. Permitting to the advanced level would allow, if the EMT personnel to provide greater...
We get the...
To approve the request to purchase the required medical equipment and the needed radio to complete the outfitting of the ambulance with the required equipment for permitting to the EMT advanced level from ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars due to possible cost increases.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
To, to be clear, we're, we're at the option two.
Yeah.
Correct.
All those in favor? You dance.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item twenty-six, discussion about a standardized procedure for the annual evaluation of the city manager, Councilor Hanson.
That's me, I'm going to go so, so fast, could I use your paper one?
You've been?
My computer has died because we've been here for too long. So, this is for the future, because we already did the city manager's review for this year. But, so, I think, as I was saying last time, I think it would be nice if we had a little bit more formalized process. This is not something that we need to vote on. But if anybody here has ideas about questions they would like to be different, or a way they would like it to be different, please shout it out, because I sort of made this up based on the HR committee met and also based on what MMA had to send me. So, the idea would be that in early January, whoever the resource, human resources manager is, would give the city manager a self-evaluation form, and then a survey to all the department heads and all the city counselors. We would all fill them out, and then they would be returned to the HR manager and sealed envelopes for confidentiality. Then the HR committee would meet in January, unseal all of these completely confidential documents, look for themes. And then we would meet, as we always do, in February for our executive session to review the feedback. So, the next page is just like, I invented a city manager self-evaluation. If other people have different questions they want to go on there, please say so. And then the last page is the one that would go to city counselors and to department heads. That's just a survey, and that came from the MMA. So, we don't have to vote on this, but if anyone has thoughts, please shout them out. Bordeaux, shout them out, and we can...
I just want to say, I appreciate the time and effort you've put into this, because I, I think it's a good process in terms of, it's, it's, it's always been kind of a looser process, and this creates some fairness for the city manager in, in terms of having an objective evaluation, not just this random subjectivity in terms of seven people sitting around a table that interact, you know, in different, different ways. So, thank you for, for doing that.
Only recommended, recommendation I would have is you just want to drop the dates, because that's based on my contract, but.
Oh, you mean the whole January, February?
Right, yeah, my anniversary's January sixth, but depending on when your contract falls, your dates are going to be different.
Yeah, so just say yearly.
To the anniversary, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Well, whatever, I have to, I'll need on my computer when it wakes back up.
I might suggest to you further categorize the self-evaluation. It seems like there's relationships to personal goals, relationships to city. I might include relationships to the council in terms of sort of mutual expectations to the public and to the staff as three sort of communication pillars, if you will.
You're saying the self-evaluated goals between those two, those three relationships, between the council, between the public, and between the staff? Okay. Good, so that's fine, if there's nobody else.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven, discussion of budget categories, Councilor Hanson.
Okay, I can do this one fast, too, and we did, I can't remember if we talked about it over email or in actual real person. But last year, the part of the budget season that confused me the most, or I was, felt like was so, well, confusing, was the, I think we called it social services, and I just was hoping that we could split it between organizations that partner with us, like, to help us financially versus organizations that partner with us basically to serve the needs of our community. So, I was thinking, like, for example, we had a recent workshop with Heart of Ellsworth where we learned, I had to go back and find this, that in the... had to go back and find this, that in the year 2022, we gave them twenty-eight hundred dollars, and they brought in two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grant funding. So, that's like a very financial relationship, where we're kind of really making an investment in what we expect to come back to us, versus, say, Down East Community Partners, who we also recently supported, because they're helping, you know, citizens of Ellsworth who are suffering in some way and don't meet, we can't help them through, what's that department?
General Assistance.
General Assistance. So, anyways, that was just a basic thought, in that way, hopefully, when we hear from these organizations, they can just be clear about, like, the Chamber of Commerce, Heart of Ellsworth, and whoever else would fit in that category. This is the kind of money we bring into the city, or the kind of economic development versus this is the way we help your citizens. That's all.
I think we mentioned at the last council meeting, so Matt and I sat down, and in your, we kind of tried to define recreation versus outside. So, in your section eight this year, you'll notice there's four agencies up here that are administrations, which includes Heart of Ellsworth and the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, okay.
And the rest down here are those social services like WIC and things. So, I think that we've made more sense of it.
Yeah.
But as we go through this cycle, if all of you could make more notes, we can further fix it for next year.
That sounds good. Thank you.
And I would recommend that we actually do that, so that each organization we talk about, that we also take a moment to say, okay, we're, what category does this, because if we don't, the next council's going to have the same discussion?
Yeah.
And nothing's going to happen. And then the next council's going to have the same discussion. So, I think we have a chance to kind of frame that up, and if we just keep that in mind in our workshop, we'll make that list.
It'll stay that way.
One of the struggles Matt and I had was Heart of Ellsworth, for example, had a large request, but some was recreation activities, like concert series, and some was their operational needs. And we threw it all under their one budget. But do you want it broken out? Do you want them to do two requests, you know, so when there's the one group that has multiple facets, that's where maybe you all can come in?
Yeah, and maybe the groups themselves. In the future, we can say, like, what category do you want to be, what category do you want to be evaluated under?
You think I was staring you down?
I wanted to be sure.
Cara Romano, Executive Director, Heart of Ellsworth. I wish you guys would put this on the agenda a little earlier tonight, but I'm kidding. I'm sure you all want to go home. I just want to state that what would be really helpful, at least for our organization, I'm not going to speak for everybody else in the city, but for our organization, it would be really helpful to know what the council wants to fund and which projects we should be putting into our yearly letter and request for appropriations. This year, we did send it to the Economic Development Department, which we work closely with. And so, any direction sort of throughout the year, we're pretty good about attending these meetings, coming to finance, what have you. And so, that sort of clarity for us would probably save a lot of time, I guess, in the future. And we sort of just put in there, this year at least, you know, the things that we're working on, we think benefit the city, but there's a lot of confusion out there, at least for us, about what the city wants and what we should be doing. I think we're getting closer to sort of closing that gap, but, and I also will say, too, that it would be easier if we were not presenting two different times. I think that might be a little bit difficult, but not to say that if that was what you chose to do, that we wouldn't be able to do that, but...
So, we'll let you know when we know, because we don't know. But seriously, in terms of what Counsel Hanson said, come to the budget meeting with your recommendation of where do you think you should be, based on your organization, because that will help us in when we're talking about it. Because, as you just heard, that's what we're going to be trying to figure out, so that next year it will be easier for organizations like yours, so...
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you're just looking at the money piece, and you look at organizations like ours that bring money into the city, we're not just asking for money, we actually bring money to the city in grants that we bring in and things like that, and grants is just one of our revenue streams. But I would say that, you know, I feel like we are in a bit of a different category. A lot of other organizations that do receive money don't bring money into the city for projects, and I'll just use one, like the River Walk, for example. We brought in almost thirty thousand dollars this year for that one project alone. So, I'm hopeful that that aspect of things will sort of kind of create that direction and an understanding of where we should be. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Item twenty-eight, discussion of changing the April council meeting date due to absences of the city manager and council, it should be council members. I requested this because I know that Manager Moser is not going to be in attendance. I know that Counsel Lyons and myself will not be in attendance. So, it just seemed like there were a large enough group around this table that would not be available, and wanted to raise the question of moving the meeting to April tenth.
I can do that. I could do that.
Counsel Hallow.
I'd just like to throw out that those of us that planned around the third Monday of April get penalized in this.
Well, there's no, nobody's being penalized. This is a question in terms of, that I raised, and that's why I wanted to bring it to the council, as a question because of the number of people. I can tell you, in my five years, I've missed a couple of meetings. I've never requested, because I wasn't going to be here to not have the meeting. The council has the discretion to make any decision. You can vote any way you want. So, it's not a penalty, it's just a discussion.
And it would have been a budget meeting anyway.
Right. It was a budget workshop.
That budget workshop.
Oh, you're going to be here on April.
Someone's going to be here.
That workshop moves to the thirteenth.
Do we need a motion?
Your change?
We do need a motion.
We do need a motion.
I say motion to approve moving the meeting to the, what was it, the tenth?
Tenth.
Tenth, at six o'clock.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
What does that do to the budget? If you don't mind, can I make a note of that?
No. We were planning on having, so it moves the school department from the tenth to the thirteenth, and the thirteenth was scheduled to be an extra budget workshop anyway.
Okay.
So, and the school department's quite happy.
Sure they are.
Okay, so the thirteenth is the, was the free spot, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Ma'am, could I just ask that we get this posted, if you can do it tomorrow, just on a, just to let, give everybody as much notice as possible?
We've already, we've already laid the groundwork with the staff for agenda items, because, so just so everybody knows, public hearings will have to be in by the twenty-third, and then agenda will have to be set next week. So, anyone at this table who has agenda items for April, make sure you get those requests in over the next five to seven days.
Well, it wants to be a short meeting.
Item twenty-nine, executive session pursuant to MRSA Chapter four oh five six A for Personnel Matter. Main revised statutes allows bodies or agencies to hold private executive sessions under certain criteria. These types of private proceedings do not include any decision-making motions or final authority. They are discussion only. The purpose under law for such proceedings related to personnel is to protect individuals' reputation, right to privacy, employment conditions, evaluation of other personnel-related topics. Is there a motion? There's a motion.
To approve, to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All you all are in here. I need these signed.
We are in executive session. Light goes green. We're back on. We're back. Is there a motion?
I know there should be a motion. I just am trying to say it right.
Cannot conclude any numbers, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll take a stab at it. So, request to, move to approve an increase of five percent COLA for the city manager, and to be retroactive to his contract date.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item thirty, council comments. Any council want to make any comments?
I'm going to hang right.
I want to, but I don't dare to, so I'm not going to.
You'd better know if you need to.
No, no, no.
Well, I'd like, no, it's, item thirty-one, adjournment.
This is fine.
Motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Third.
We're adjourned.
Oh, look at that. It's only...